I like to call a special meeting of the City Council Public Finance Authority to order. Uh, City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Calmick.
Here.
Councilmember Moser.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Vandermark.
Here.
Mayor Strickland.
Here.
Councilmember McKeon.
Here.
Councilmember Bolton.
Here.
Councilmember Burns.
Here.
All present.
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, uh, please stand. Uh, the Pledge of Allegiance today will be led by Councilman Pat Burns.
Please face the flag, hand it on your heart. Ready, begin.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance for all.
Please remain standing. Um, Huntington Beach Fire and Police Chaplain Roger Wing will give us our invocation.
Would you please pray with me as we get begin this evening's meeting? Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to have this special council meeting this evening and and the openness of the council to receive input from our citizens concerning this very important topic of the city's charter. We know that this is a very emotional issue and that people have many various thoughts and positions, but you know, different perspectives are good and they all serve to provide the input that's needed to make the decisions that are best for our community. It's important that all views are considered as the council deliberates over possible changes and we we thank you for the council's openness to do so. May you, Lord, provide each member with your wisdom and discernment regarding all the comments that are being presented this evening and may you lead them as they discuss, consider, and make decisions. May you bring your peace, unity, and harmony through all the deliberations and activities tonight. May all who are here tonight see our council working together to do what's most beneficial for our city. Lord, we pray for all those who would be providing their input and sharing their views at the podium this evening. It's expected that there will be many varied views on these issues, but we can share those views graciously and without ranker. Help them and guide them to share clearly and concisely and with dignity and respect. We thank you for bringing them here this evening to assure that our council has the benefit of the community's views and thoughts. And Lord, we want to lift up a special prayer for this weekend's airshow. Lord, we pray for your protection, for your peace, that it'd be an enjoyable time for all the families that come out to watch it and that the rain would hold off. We ask you now, Lord, to bless our meeting this evening and may your peace and wisdom guide all that occurs tonight. And we ask this in your name, Lord. Amen.
Going down the agenda, City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, Mayor. For administrative item number two, 55 emails were uploaded regarding the potential charter amendments to our record and since our supplemental cutoff, we received 14 after that, which will be added to the record today as well. We received a letter from Councilmembers Calmick, Bolton, and Moser addressed to the Secretary of State regarding the proposed voter ID provision and also to the Orange County Registrar of Voters. And we also received a letter from Attorney General Robantah and California Secretary of State Shirley Weber regarding the proposed charter amendments requiring voter identification at the polls and monitoring of ballot drop boxes in municipal elections. For Councilmember item number three, we received three emails regarding the proposal to seek an opinion from the California Attorney General on proposed charter amendments. That was uploaded into the record and we've received one email since our deadline cutoff as well. That's it.
Great. Um, City Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
We have 37 signed up to speak, so I'm going to go ahead and call the first group of 10. Please come down and approach both podiums. Barbara Shapiro, Jeannie Paris, Delane Bailey, Ann Palmer, Patricia Pappas, Frank Zapia, Martha Zapia, Dennis Pappas, Don Kennedy, and Shammy D.
Let me read this at this time. At this time, the City Council will receive comments from members of the public regarding discussion of the potential charter amendments for March 5th, 2024 statewide primary election ballot. Individuals wishing to provide a comment may do so in person by filling out a request to speak form delivered to the City Clerk. All speakers are encouraged but not required to identify themselves by name. Each speaker may have up to 90 seconds unless the volume of speakers warrants reducing the time allowance. Please note that the Brown Act does not allow discussion or action on topics that are not on the agenda. Members of the public who would like to speak directly with a council member on an item not on the agenda may be considered scheduling an appointment by contacting the City Council's Administrative Assistant at 714-536-5553 or emailing the entire City Council at city.council@surfcity-hb.org. So with that, uh, we have our speakers and, um...
Thank you for being here. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Shammy. Um, I wanted to talk tonight about how the council committee, the Charter Amendment Committee, really doesn't seem to have done their homework. Last night, we found out that the mayor didn't know you can go to any vote center and get a complete localized HB ballot. The drop boxes are already monitored. And just today, the city received letters from the California District Attorney and the Secretary of State telling the city, "This plan violates state law." It's very unlikely that the OC Registrar would change their voter ID system just for Huntington Beach residents. This committee needs to tell the residents of HB the truth and quit trying to hide the true cost of this election scheme. Everybody knows that people are bad at, every study knows, shows that people are bad at verifying pictures of unfamiliar faces. To make matters worse, inexperienced people do not feel confident enough to challenge a suspicious ID. There are a lot of reasons: changes in hair, growing a beard, gaining weight, aging, or just a poorly trained examiner. Yet here we are, ready to give up the accurate, secure voting system that we already have just to use unreliable photo ID in very expensive local elections. The bottom line is this is going to cost the city a lot of money. There's, first of all, there's going to be a lot of equipment that has to be purchased. And then we have to design a system as well as training.
Five seconds.
And then there will be huge costs for printing and mailing. That's a lot of money to solve a non-existent problem.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Thank you. Next speaker. Thanks for being here.
My name is Delane Bailey and I am in favor of photo voter ID and surveillance of drop boxes. According to the Election Integrity Project of California, the state legislature has been working for the last 20 years to weaken the integrity of our election process through means such as no voter, no photo voter ID, pre-registration of 16-year-olds, felon voting, same-day registration and voting without the ability to ensure the legitimacy of the voter, automatic DMV registration resulting in hundreds of thousands of changes to voter registrations without their knowledge, potential manipulation of national voter registration resulting in massively bloated voter rolls, mailing vote-by-mail ballots to every name on the state or county voter rolls, including those ineligible yet still listed due to poor list maintenance procedures, non-citizen registration and voting with or without their knowledge due to motor voter, manipulation of vulnerable populations through ballot harvesting, policies and procedures that do not protect integrity in the management of elections and the processing of ballots. For these reasons, we should, as a beginning measure, require photo voter ID.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Next speaker. Thanks for being here.
Yeah, good evening, City Council. My name is Frank Zapia. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. Um, I'm going to take a step back for a second because I'm one of many people that watch the City Council meetings time in and time out. And one of the things that I wanted to do is show up and express my appreciation for the new majority of the City Council. We watch these meetings and I see people come in and talk and I'm always blown away on topics like when we're talking about libraries or things like that. We have people, person after person, talking about things like banning books. And I, I see that and I go, what City Council meeting are they going to or what are they hearing? Because I hear nothing about anything that has anything to do with banning books, you know, type thing. And then I do a little bit of research into it and I find out, I see where they get those ideas. They get flyers that say the city of Huntington Beach wants to ban books. And there's nothing that the city of Huntington Beach said that they wanted to do to ban books. And I just, for me, what I've appreciated is the integrity of the new majority. They talked about three or four things that they were going to do when they were elected, specific things like oppose high-density housing, address the homelessness issue, in my opinion, in a humane way, among other things, and support the city, uh, the city attorney. I think you've done that and you've done more and we really do appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much for being here. Thank you. Next speaker. Thanks for being here.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mayor Strickland, Mayor Pro Tem Vandermark, and City Council members. My name is Jeannie Paris and I've lived in Huntington Beach for over 27 years. I am here tonight to support the ongoing dialogue regarding the charter review. I support all current proposals, particularly voter ID and more in-person voting. I am also here to thank the Fab Four and our city attorney, um, for un-sacramenting, un-sacramenting Surf City. Regardless of many comments suggesting otherwise, the city overwhelmingly supports you. And yes, you were voted in by a landslide. So many lives have been thrown your way the last few months. Book banning is one of them. No one has ever mentioned banning books in Huntington Beach. It's about keeping porn out of minors' hands unless approved by a parent. Move them to the adult section. Huntington Beach is a laughing stock. No, on the contrary, our state is a laughing stock and Surf City has been a model of freedom throughout the country. Fascist Four, fascists take away your liberty, force you to wear a mask and get a vaccine or shut down your business or your church because it was not essential, not the City Council. Fascists don't fight the state to stop high-density development. They prefer small, little living spaces in favor of single-family dwellings that promote individual independence, not the City Council. I can go on and on, but my favorite is when I hear, "I'm watching you, we're watching you." Well, we're all watching you and thank you very much. Keep the fight going.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next speaker. Thanks for being here.
Hi, I'm Ann Palmer, a 30-year resident of Huntington Beach, and this charter review is quite impressive. I thank you for giving us all the opportunity to participate. I've given you my views here and in emails, so I want to move on to something else. Um, I was impressed that you opened the door for suggestions for charter amendments that may not have been addressed. So I have two things. One is, um, this council, um, recent election was focused on anti-HDD and I would like to see an amendment that further protects us. This is based on a recent decision to put in some very high-density housing, I think 70 units per square acre, 70 units per acre, um, in the harbor area and it's five stories. It's just, does not seem at all appropriate. I can't tell where it came from, but I think we need further charter amendments as our city attorney fights the state and the statewide, um, pushing back on Governor Newsom is, is picking up speed. The second is, um, I want to know if we have a flood mitigation plan and if we have done a study on that. And the reason for that is that most coastal cities do. We can't rely on the state and we need mitigation lands. The things that give you a plan are, um, construction and land use. And we have very few land properties left that would be flood mitigation channels and I think we should look at that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Thank you. Next speaker. Thanks for being here.
Hi, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor and, uh, City Council and staff for allowing me to speak. Um, we, um, my name is Dennis Pappas and I've been a resident for over 50 years and I have watched Huntington Beach change dramatically and I'm so thankful for the new City Council to come out and push against all these changes and bring, uh, Huntington Beach back to the beach city it once was. And, uh, I'm speaking on behalf of my neighbors, my family, my friends who all support the measures that you're doing and support the changes in the charter. I mean, we have IDs for everything else and why can't we have an ID for, um, a voter ID? It's just, um, if you don't want to be honest, then you don't want it. So thank you, uh, for your fight and know that there is a whole group of people that voted you in, that are backing you, that you don't always see at these meetings. So thank you and keep fighting on. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. Thank you. Next speaker. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Patty Pappas here. Um, glad to be speaking here in support of all the charter, uh, measures and proposals that you're putting forward. I'm happy that, um, a couple of things, the voter ID and then the part about the city attorney. I really want the city attorney to be in charge of the attorney's office, not the council, not like what happened with the, um, the Joint Power Authority where that bond went through without a vote. And I know that there's ways to go through that, but still very, very unethical. So thanks for letting me speak and we support you and we thank you.
Thanks so much for being here. Thank you. Next speaker. Thanks for being here.
Greetings, Councilmembers. My name is Don Kennedy. I'm no expert, but that ID was Homer Simpson. And by fiat, just don't talk about expense because the previous council took away 25 million in property taxes by a stroke of the pen by fiat, so let's not talk about expenses. Uh, like many residents, I've watched the attacks on the council majority. I've read the biased liberal publications like the Register and the LA Times that the majority of residents are against these changes. My question is, how do they know? I've got two words: silent majority. We may not be vocal, but we sent a very clear message at the ballot box in 2022 and we will do it again in 2024. I hear speakers say with a negative inflection demanding, "Of the people, by the people, for the people." So allow me to clarify, these council members are of the people, unlike the out-of-town speakers where there's scripted marching orders. These council members were elected by the people, virtual landslide, except for Ms. Bolton. And these members do work for the people. So although the vocal crowds are filled with negativity, the silent majority do feel this council is working for the people. The council majority is extremely transparent, unlike, uh, unlike the, uh, previous council allowing weeks of public input, allowing hundreds of speakers with their full three minutes of council meetings, something Ms. Moser, Del Glazian Calmick never allowed. Censorship comes along.
10 seconds.
So council members, fine-tune your amendments and put it to a vote by the people. Don Kennedy for City Council 2024. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, next speaker. Thanks so much for being here. Thank you.
I'm a Huntington Beach resident.
Hold on, ma'am, ma'am, hold on. Give your undivided attention to our speakers, please. Thank you.
Can I have a quiet, please? Last week, our mayor spoke at a meeting supposed, sponsored by a new fringe group called HB Patriots. I heard him mock our public speakers by saying, "You know what bothers them the most? When I say 'thank you,' 'thank you for coming.'" To register to vote initially, an ID is required and subsequently, your signature is your ID by penalty of perjury. Here's a copy of the Constitution. It was signed. Should we question its validity because the framers didn't show ID? What if I told you, "I believe God put me in Huntington Beach to oppose the charter amendments." I wouldn't do that because I'm not in a cult. But Tony says that he was put here by God. The rhetoric during this meeting was a barrage of our side versus their side, only pretending to listen to the public comments.
Five seconds.
He concludes...
Sorry.
...will win anyway.
All right, um, Madam Clerk, uh, call the next 10.
Thank you. I'll go with the next.
Thank you.
I'm going to recall Martha Zapia. Okay, one recall for Martha Zapia. Buzz McCord, Dennis, Andrew Einhorn, Mary Kyle, Kane Durham, Neil, David Reinerson, Wendy Rincon, Linda Moon, Connie Boardman.
Honorable Mayor, elected council members, my name is Dennis. I'm a 40-year member of resident Huntington Beach. I do support limitations on the flags. I think that's necessary. The mayor should not have authority to cancel a council meeting all by themselves. I can see a lot of areas for abuse on that one. Amory Hansen recommended that we propose a charter amendment dealing with the vacancies on the council. The last council handled this very poorly and we wound up with a council member who was a long-term member that no one voted for. Two-year cycle on the budget makes good sense to me. I cannot see any reason to change the qualifications of any of our elected office positions. Whereas I do support voter ID, that's a real can of worms. I do limit limitations on the collection, I do, do favor limitations on the waiver of collections or forgiveness of taxes. Measure C has served us all very well and any changes to that must be very narrowly tailored. The mess between the old city council and the city attorney really does need to be addressed in our, in our charter and I do think that some of the proposals are a little bit broad. If any charter amendment has...
10, 10 seconds, sir.
Thank you. If any charter amendment has merit, it should stand on its own and it should never be bundled with others. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next speaker. Thanks for being here.
Hi, Buzz McCord. Let's imagine that you managed to jam the charter amendments through and you get your vote, uh, for the special election in March. McKeon told us that it will only cost Huntington Beach only $485,000, more or less, and that, uh, that's more than if you don't push through the special election if it occurs in November. Okay, fine. So let's imagine that you convince voters to fix an election system that isn't broken and doesn't cost HB anything to run and your amendments win in March. Game on. You will actually have to run an election, but you've never done that before, especially not rookie Mayor Vandermark, who by the way, will have to take the heat if there's a fumble. You have five months to prepare an election for 130,000 registered voters. Do you own ballot boxes, address ledgers, paper for the machines, who trains the poll workers and the ID identifiers? Does the city staff simply stop working on everything else or you hire some more people? And note, the conservative Orange County ran the last election with zero cases of fraud, zero nada. You're going to have to beat that. Old business wisdom, fast, good, or cheap. You can only have two. You won't find out until March if we take over elections, so you have already chosen fast and I presume you want good. Then it's not going to be cheap.
10 seconds.
That sounds like someone letting me pilot a plane in the airshow but making me build it first before the weekend on my own dollar. This is a political tourist and three rookies.
Thank you.
What could go wrong?
Thank you so much for being here. Next, next speaker. Thanks for being here.
Mary Kyle, a 25-year resident of Huntington Beach, and I strongly oppose or opposed charter amendments. Um, I'd like to read from an email that Fred Whitaker, Chairman of the OC GOP, sent. Um, it's dated October 13th, 2022, 2021, I think. Um, so it says, "Orange County Republicans, vote-by-mail ballots were mailed to every Orange County voter yesterday and in the coming days you will receive your ballot. I wanted to take a moment to address concerns on election integrity and the midterm elections. It is simple, safe, and secure to vote in Orange County because your local Republican Party has worked to ensure the elections are conducted with full transparency and confidence. We are only, we are one of only, one of the only counties in California to have a full-time staff and an election attorney all year round. This allows us to work with the registrar of voters directly to review procedures, machines, vote center locations, and participate in audits and testing." Then he goes on to voting in person. "If you prefer to vote in person, vote centers across Orange County open on Saturday, October 29th. You can vote at any vote center in Orange County until Tuesday, November 8th at 8:00 PM. Voting on election day adds no additional benefit to voter security, but voting early allows the Republican Party and campaigns to focus resources on low-propensity voters who may not vote unless we continue the outreach." And I'll can pick this up in the next 90 seconds.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next speaker. Thanks for being here.
Andy Einhorn, Huntington Beach. I've previously discussed I'm against all charter amendment issues. Tonight, I'm going to speak on the medical aspects. Viruses don't participate in elections or have any concern for the political process. It's disheartening, in my opinion, to witness Councilmember Vandermark's attempt to gain political mileage by proposing changes to our city charter related to masks and vaccines. Currently, no one is mandating masks or vaccines. This information should come from trusted healthcare professionals only, the Orange County Health Department, the State Health Department, or the CDC. Council meetings are not the appropriate platform for making medical recommendations. Instead, these decisions, decisions should be guided by experts in the field of medicine. I implore council members without a medical background to refrain from offering unsolicited medical advice. In conclusion, start monitoring the current COVID numbers and wake up and use common sense if that's possible. On a lighter note, I would like to thank staff for all their hard work, especially noted the e-bike and bicycle information that they proposed and also Lieutenant Archer for his excellent presentation.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next speaker. Thanks for being here.
I'm Linda Moon. I'm a 49-year resident of Huntington Beach. We elect City Council members with the expectation that you will make well-informed decisions on our behalf. Many of us are disappointed to see that you're attempting to make very uninformed decisions. Mayor Strickland revealed at the last meeting that he was completely unaware that under the Voters' Choice Act, Huntington Beach voters may vote a Huntington Beach ballot at any voting center in the county and that voters from other cities may vote their city's ballot at voting centers in Huntington Beach. He arrogantly insisted that was not the case. He also misrepresented... Game on. You will actually have to run an election. But you've never done that before, especially not rookie Mayor Vandermark, who, by the way, will have to take the heat if there's a fumble. You have five months to prepare an election for 130,000 registered voters. Do you own ballot boxes, address ledgers, paper for the machines, who trains the poll workers, and the ID identifiers? The city staff simply stop working on everything else, or you hire some more people? And note, the conservative Orange County ran the last election with zero cases of fraud, zero nada. You're going to have to beat that. Old business wisdom, fast, good, or cheap. You can only have two. You won't find out until March if we take over elections, so you have already chosen fast. And I presume you want good. Then it's not going to be cheap.
Ten seconds.
That sounds like someone letting me pilot a plane in the airshow but making me build it first before the weekend on my own dollar. This is a political tourist and three rookies.
Thank you.
What could go wrong?
Thank you so much for being here. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Mary Kyle, a 25-year resident of Huntington Beach, and I strongly oppose or opposed charter amendments. I'd like to read from an email that Fred Whitaker, chairman of the OC GOP, sent. It's dated October 13th, 2022, 2021, I think. So it says, "Orange County Republicans, vote by mail. Ballots were mailed to every Orange County voter yesterday, and in the coming days you will receive your ballot. I wanted to take a moment to address concerns on election integrity and the midterm elections. It is simple, safe, and secure to vote in Orange County because your local Republican Party has worked to ensure the elections are conducted with full transparency and confidence. We are one of the only counties in California to have a full-time staff and an election attorney all year round. This allows us to work with the registrar of voters directly to review procedures, machines, vote center locations, and participate in audits and testing." Then he goes on to voting in person. "If you prefer to vote in person, vote centers across Orange County open on Saturday, October 29th. You can vote at any vote center in Orange County until Tuesday, November 8th at 8:00 PM. Voting on Election Day adds no additional benefit to voter security, but voting early allows the Republican Party and campaigns to focus resources on low propensity voters who may not vote unless we continue the outreach." And I'll pick this up in the next 90 seconds.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Andy Einhorn, Huntington Beach. I've previously discussed I'm against all charter amendment issues. Tonight, I'm going to speak on the medical aspects. Viruses don't participate in elections or have any concern for the political process. It's disheartening, in my opinion, to witness Councilmember Vandermark's attempt to gain political mileage by proposing changes to our city charter related to masks and vaccines. Currently, no one is mandating masks or vaccines. This information should come from trusted healthcare professionals only, the Orange County Health Department, the State Health Department, or the CDC. Council meetings are not the appropriate platform for making medical recommendations. Instead, these decisions should be guided by experts in the field of medicine. I implore council members without a medical background to refrain from offering unsolicited medical advice. In conclusion, start monitoring the current COVID numbers and wake up and use common sense if that's possible. On a lighter note, I would like to thank staff for all their hard work, especially noted the e-bike and bicycle information that they proposed, and also Lieutenant Archer for his excellent presentation.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
I'm Linda Moon. I'm a 49-year resident of Huntington Beach. We elect city council members with the expectation that you will make well-informed decisions on our behalf. Many of us are disappointed to see that you're attempting to make very uninformed decisions. Mayor Strickland revealed at the last meeting that he was completely unaware that under the Voters' Choice Act, Huntington Beach voters may vote a Huntington Beach ballot at any voting center in the county, and that voters from other cities may vote their city's ballot at voting centers in Huntington Beach. He arrogantly insisted that was not the case. He also misrepresented that the registrar of voters had no problem with the amendments when, in fact, that office had stated that it would remain neutral and issue no opinion. You are attempting to impose so-called voting enhancements that cannot be required of voters throughout the county or of other cities' residents voting in Huntington Beach. You are unaware of the very strict security provisions imposed by the county for voting centers, ballot boxes, and ballot transportation. And you are unaware that the measures proposed were illegal under state law, as stated by the Attorney General and Secretary of State in their letter to you today. All of this information should have been obtained and reviewed thoroughly before you made the hasty, ill-considered decision to proceed with the amendment process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Hi, David Reinerson, 25-year resident of Huntington Beach. I want to concur with Connie Boardman, or I believe she was absolutely correct. I think this is work you should have done. You should have reached out to the county registrar of voters. You should have reached out to the state. So I want to thank the minority council members for doing that on your behalf and getting an answer from them, which basically would have put this to bed before we even started. Second, I want to say that I think the whole process has been performative, that there's no evidence that you're actually listening to people that come up here and talk. You've been overwhelmingly treated to people opposed to the election charter amendment, and yet it is utterly unchanged in what's documented at this point in time. And I would also say, I think that you put the information out so late that most people -- I happen to be retired, so I have time in the morning to go review that information and give you a reasonable response, having looked at it. Most of the people in the city have been working nine to five, eight to five, and therefore they have precious little time to actually review this stuff before showing up at a meeting. So if you really value your citizens' input, get the information out earlier so people have a chance to read it and respond intelligently.
Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Hi, my name is Neil. I know I've been here a couple of times now, so I don't think I need to rehash everything that's been said by other people and been said by me before. I do want to address a couple of things. Number one, I think that this process really doesn't work with the time allotted for comment, given the massive number of charter proposals that are now on. With the addition of the ones of our last section, it's really unreasonable to expect to actually get public input when, you know, there's what, over a dozen? There were a dozen at the start, and now there's even more. Number two, we still haven't really discussed the bundling. Now we have, again, an additional, you know, over a dozen items. Are those all going to be bundled in sets of three? Is the original bundling going to remain? Is there going to be no bundling? Why are we bundling now then if we're going to do this whole process? That's number two. And number three, I do want to speak on the flag ordinance, which hasn't -- or rather, charter proposal, which hasn't been discussed at all because I believe Pat was out previously. So I wanted to talk to that, and I wanted to thank Councilman Burkalmick for identifying last session that there are a lot of these really could be or ought to be ordinances rather than charter proposals. And I ask, if we already have the ordinance that addresses the flag, why does it need to be a charter amendment? Is it only so that it's harder to remove? Because that seems like a really silly way to try to force -- you've already talked about, you know, rogue councils and not wanting to tie things down, and that kind of is part of it. So I think there should be a focus on why things need to be in a charter versus an ordinance.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Hi, my name is Kane Durham. Actually, following up on what Neil said about the flag ordinance or the flag ban, which is really what it is, I would agree with him. It seems like the -- when we already have this ordinance in place, put it on the city's constitution, only seems necessary to make it that much harder for if 10 years down the line, the people in the city decide to change their mind, they're going to have to spend $300,000 to allow the city to fly a pride flag. It just seems like a way to make it more permanent. And then also in terms of voting, I've heard a lot of conversation about having like ballot monitors. You know, the ballot boxes and voting in person is already reviewed. These are things that it seems like a redundant issue. But also, I imagine that most of you up there have not ever experienced what it feels like to be nervous to go in to vote. I'm trans. I think I've made that very clear in the many other times that I've spoken before. My ID did not always have a name that was a man's name. And in the times that I went in to vote with that ID, I was willing to show my ID, but that's an incredibly scary thing to have to out myself to vote. Having that kind of situation, having that kind of situation and then adding like partisan ballot watchers onto it, it's just making it harder for people to vote. I don't agree with that.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Next speaker, thanks so much for being here.
Good evening, council members and Huntington Beach residents. My name is Connie Boardman. I'm a former Huntington Beach mayor, and I served on the city council for eight years. Currently, our charter gives ownership of all work products of the city attorney's office to the city council, as it should. The council sets policy for the city, so needs access to legal analysis, opinion, and settlements. One of the proposed charter amendments would take this ownership away from the council and allow the city attorney or a majority of the council to decide who has access to the work product of this department. This would allow a council majority or the attorney to deny access to legal information to the city manager or to council members who might be in the minority. All council members need access to the same information in order to be able to adequately do their job. This amendment would take that away. The charter also gives budgeting authority to our seven elected council members. This amendment would also take that away for one department, the city attorney's office. Why? How is this department more special or different than, say, Public Works that provides us with our clean drinking water or our police and fire departments that provide us with protection? It isn't more special. This is simply a power grab. Huntington Beach voters, if this amendment is placed on the ballot, it must be voted down.
Thank you. Next speaker, thank you.
Wendy Rincon, 49-year resident. Last week, a significant amount of time was spent debating the legality of the amendments. Will we see an analysis tonight? I hope that we do. Someone spoke that there was a virtual landslide in 2022. There wasn't. I'm not debating you. The vote was between 13.6% to 12.2% for the majority for it. That's hardly a landslide. I suggest strongly that this process is slowed down. We're now three weeks in. We only just started having some debates with any substance last week. That is not enough time to figure out everything that you are proposing to us, which I think is intentional. You're giving us three minutes to talk about all of these important things. Finally, last week, a Speaker for the flag amendment said the Olympic flag is great. The world is watching. She then called the pride flag the perverted flag. That says it all. That is not a difference of an opinion. That is outright homophobia, and yes, the world is watching.
Thank you. City Clerk, the next 10. Thank you.
Yes. Next 10, please come down. Kathy Ryder, Tim Geddes, Guest P., Lisa, Catherine Goddard, Mary Jo Berettish, Butch Twining, Harry McLaughlin, Amory Hanson, Steve Wells.
Next speaker, thank you for being here.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tim Geddes here, 40-year resident. Earlier, I sent the council a letter regarding the proposed charter amendments. I hope you've had a chance to read and review it. Our main concern is the tinkering of our local elections, including voter ID. If the Orange County Registrar of Voters is not fully on board with your changes, then I suggest even demand that you scrap an amendment which would cost many, many thousands of dollars to place on the March primary ballot, much, much more to implement on our own, and which would put an impossible strain on both the city staff and our local government A massive overreach, not remotely justified by any legitimate fears regarding election security or voter participation. You have less than 10 weeks to dedicate yourselves fairly, honestly, and honorably to your deliberations. That dedication should pay off by December 8th, which I am sure the council majority will not recognize as Hanukkah. Dedication, Hanukkah. It's time to listen to the community and to the experts and not just your misguided mega base.
Ten seconds.
Don't rush it and don't blow it. In this case, hard right is hard wrong. Thank you.
Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening, Mayor Strickland and City Council members. My name is Lisa, and I'd like to provide input on the charter amendment issue regarding flying flags on city properties. A thought struck me the other day that being a resident and taxpayer of Huntington Beach, city properties belong to the city taxpayers. For this reason, it would make sense that we, the taxpayers, would be the best people to decide which flags would be most appropriate to be flown on the city buildings. And therefore, in the spirit of democracy, I submit -- I support submitting this issue to the ballot measure. Also at this time, I would like to commend the council on the effort of these extra Thursday meetings. Anyone who has taken the time to listen to the dialogue will agree that there has been worthwhile progress in working through these issues. These extra meetings, at Councilman McKeon's suggestion, have allowed more input from the public, as well as extra time for the council members to debate the key points, making this a much better work product in the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening, Mayor Strickland and City Council members. My name is Mary Jo Berettish, a 40-year resident of Huntington Beach. I'm asking you to please stop this proposed tinkering of our local election and focus on voter ID. It is unnecessary, too rushed, too impractical, too costly, and too fraught with controversy, especially in the March primary less than six months away. Forcing this particular unnecessary charter amendment onto the public would destroy the trust and connection between our local government and the broader communities. It is time for you to listen to the community. You do not need to lose their trust. We simply do not have the resources or the expertise to carry it out, especially if the Orange County Registrar of Voters is not fully on board with the effort. We were also not provided with actionable evidence and data to justify the proposed changes in our election procedures. Additionally, the lumping together of unrelated items in each of the proposed charter amendments on the ballot is unacceptable. It confuses voters by forcing a yes or no vote on unrelated items. And if any proposed amendments are going to be placed on the ballot, they need to be individual ballot measures. In conclusion, I state that perhaps we citizens need to get assistance of outside legal firm to conduct a more needed legal analysis of all the proposed charter amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening. My name is Butch Twining. I'm a -- currently, I'm on the Planning Commission, and I'm also a candidate for City Council next year. I bring a message tonight of positivity. On the eve of our great airshow, which starts tomorrow, I just wanted to thank some patriots that are sitting up here tonight. Many of us attended an event today out of the Joint Training Base, Los Alamos, to pay tribute to our fantastic military, and I want to thank our Mayor Tony Strickland, and Mayor Pro Tem Vandermark, Councilman McKeon, and Councilman Pat Burns, our wonderful city manager, Michael Gates, and his wife Kelly, Lynn Semeta, Janet Wen. The patriots were on full display out there today, and I commend you all, and I thank you for saving this airshow. Thank you. It wouldn't be proper if I didn't also thank the organizer of the event, Kevin Elliott, who puts it all on the line to put this show on and bring Huntington Beach into the fantastic light for the world to see. And so, thank you, Kevin, if you're watching. That's pretty much it.
Ten seconds.
I said this would be a message of positivity. If I could just ask that the other side give everybody up here the respect when they're talking and not cackle in the crowd, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
HB voter and resident, in 2022, 80% of all Huntington Beach voters voted by mail. The proposed amendments that changed voting is basically just for 20% of the total HB voters. How ridiculous to make a charter amendment for such a small minority of voters. Also, this amendment keeps stating about these 20 new residential voting locations. We don't know if they'll be ADA compliant. We don't know if there'll be restrooms. What if I fall? Do I sue both the homeowner and the city? What about any future technology, when we perhaps vote with a thumbprint or some kind of facial recognition? So why would we enshrine asking for a physical ID into our charter? And these cameras that are going to be placed on the OC Registrar of Voters official drop boxes, will they be monitored 24/7? How much will this cost? What's the criteria for reporting an alleged criminal act? Who will prosecute the alleged criminal? And like many, I would prefer that my task dollars go towards city services, such as increased hours for our libraries, improving our streets, more meals delivered to our vulnerable seniors. And the costs that have been proposed are in today's $20, $23. We don't know what any of these costs will be in '26, '28, '23, or beyond. You're simply hamstringing our future budgets.
Ten seconds.
And Measure C is important, but let's make that a standalone amendment. Why bundle it with incongruent items?
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Hi, my name is Dr. Stephen Wells. Last week, I heard a couple of very interesting comments. First was when Mr. Strickland recommended an amendment to the charter proposed by Amory Hanson -- thank you, Amory -- that had to do with what to do when a councilman leaves office. Mr. Strickland really liked Mr. Hanson's proposal and was then amazed when Mr. Calmick said that's what exactly was in the proposal last time. Now, there was some dickering about the details, but in principle, there was significant agreement in the content of the previous proposal. That implies that there's some middle ground that both sides can agree on. I recommend that this council form additional committees that work together to see where that middle ground is and where we can agree on. And if we can't agree on something, let's push it off to another election, give some time to work through it and see what we can. There's no rush. Secondly, I heard another gentleman wearing a red USA hat, and I think I know who you were last time, and he said that we need the ability to have the discussion, to talk respectfully with each other, and listen to the other ideas, and have a discussion about what our thoughts are on something.
Ten seconds.
I would -- oh, shoot. I would love to start that discussion with that gentleman on a grassroots basis and have coffee together. So, and find out what we can agree on. And from there.
Thank you.
You guys have some great people in this city. Take advantage of them. Use them. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. Thank you. Next speaker, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Mr. Amory Hanson. I rise today to express my support for an additional charter amendment. I urge the city council to consider revising the city charter to require a special election in the event of a council vacancy. This amendment will allow for we, the people's, voice to be heard regardless of circumstances that may prevent a councilman from continuing to serve. With increasing public interest in our local government, it is important that we, the people, always be able to participate in electing our councilmen and other elected officials. I urge the council to consider adding this charter amendment to an election ballot. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Next speaker, thank you for being here.
Good evening. I'm Catherine Goddard, a 30-year resident of the city, and I'm here to urge you to pass this resolution or a submission by council members Calmick and Moser, that we stop what we're doing and pause while we get a ruling from the state attorney general. You've received a letter that -- from the Secretary of State and the state attorney general, saying that this may be illegal, this whole idea of putting these charter amendments on the March ballot. There's no rush. You've been rushing this. Five of you have been rushing this since the beginning of three members' meeting exclusively and coming forward with these ideas for charter amendments. There's a lot more to it, we're learning. You've heard a lot of concern and a lot of issues raised, so it's time to stop and see, A, if it's legal before we spend a lot of money, and B, then to listen, as people are urging you to do, to a broader range of people. Bring it forward at another time and place if it's warranted. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
I'm Harry McGlocklin. I live in Huntington Beach. The revised policy on human dignity is written by an ad hoc committee composed of members tasked with reaching predetermined outcomes reflecting their own personal and political agendas. It is totally devoid of facts and supporting data. The revised policy no longer condemns hate crimes and removes all references to them. It eliminates the LGBTQ community from policy, but inserts a provision specifically targeting them regarding their sexual identity, as well as some nonsense about sports and other activities. Councilman McKeon claims both the revised and original documents are unnecessary. He would agree to eliminate both, saying that every rational person condemns hate. I call his attention to the annual Orange County Human Relations Committee report. Hate crimes up sixty-seven percent over 2021. LGBTQ hate crimes up one hundred and twenty-six percent. I will assume these acts were committed by rational people. Our city should be speaking out against hate, not neutering current policy. Leave the original document alone. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Hi, good evening. I'm here again with signs. Mr. Mayor, you sat here last week and said that you all didn't campaign on no changes to the charter. You were only against L, M, and N. Here it is, a genuine deluxe sign from the last campaign. Vote no changes to our city charter. Doesn't specify which ones, no changes. These, these are your group's signs now, and I'm still willing to, willing deal, like I did before. This is the deal. We've got hundreds and hundreds of Gracie's signs with her protest with the Proud Boys. We have this one here, where she's doing the white power sign here with the Proud Boys at a protest. Here we have Ed Laird's Facebook post about planning the mayor's ball. I didn't know we had one with the Proud Boys and Gracie. And is this the function that's paid with city funds with the Proud Boy crew? That's a question. Now, let's barter here. If you trade a couple hundred of your signs, because I know you've got them still, I will trade you some of my Gracie signs. Just vote no on changes to the city charter, and I'll throw them in.
Ten seconds.
So let me know. Call me. The other thing, we have a conspiracy that there's no HB residents. Be proud, stand up. Let's see how many people in our audience are HB residents.
Thank you.
You guys aren't from Huntington Beach?
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
I don't, I don't see anybody that's not standing.
Next speaker.
Go ahead. Thank you.
My name is Perry Clitherow. Thank you for having me tonight. I just wanted to address the proposed charter changes, particularly for the election, especially in light of the letter today from the Attorney's General and the Secretary of State. To date, I've still only seen an estimate of the cost, so it baffles me that it's going to go to the ballot with an estimate and not a budget. Oh, you're back. I was gonna, I wanted to thank you a week ago. I'm glad you're back, because at the Tuesday meeting last week, Councilman McKeon, I was really appreciative during the quarterly homeless report of how attentive you were to the details, how much care and defensiveness you took to our tax dollars. Now, I value what the city is doing, and I'm happy with how they're spending our money, but I appreciated seeing the council member. I thought your question was sincere, it was insightful, and it was persistent, so I really appreciated that, which gets us back to the topic at hand today. We have an estimate, not a budget. We don't have an estimate even on what kind of lawsuits we might be facing. It's very clear the state's going to be suing us, and they're probably going to be very aggressive about that, given the current state of politics. I don't see that they, any other option. And I'm just not sure if this is the best use of our tax dollars to just, it seems like, based on their letter, just violate state law. So I think we need to hear from Michael Gates, find out if it is or isn't legal, or if we have a chance of winning at all. And we need a budget before we even put this on the ballot. So I really, I hope that you give the same care and attention to this and our tax dollars on this issue as you did.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, this is the last group. Joseph Shapiro, Irene Briggs, Bee Chanel, Mira Dujanovic, Mason Graham Miller, Lori Graham Miller, Cindy, and Rick Brown.
My name is Joe, and I'm a Huntington Beach resident for over forty years. I'm not a regular here. I have been here for a couple of visits here, and I'm impressed with the people that speak against the charter amendments, which I believe, based upon the information presented, that I am also opposed to charter amendment. However, I have a sneaking suspicion, and I hope I'm wrong, that it's a fait accompli, that everyone on the council have already made their decision on how they're going to vote. I hope not, because I hope they represent us, not that God sent them to rule us. So I think that hopefully you will take the words that are presented to you by the speakers, you'll take to the heart and listen to where they come from and what they mean to you, and make your decision based upon the facts and not upon your preconceived ideas of what should be. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Hi, my name is Irene Briggs, and I'm a resident of Huntington Beach. I'm not going to talk about the charter amendment. That may be what I'm supposed to talk about, but I'm going to talk about the book banning and how, what a terrible thing that is. I worked many years with children, mostly children that had been abused in their home by families. And I can tell you that if kids don't have books to read that tell them even the bad things in life, not just the good things, they won't have any questions to ask, and they'll never know what to do about what's happening to them in the home. I think banning books is the same thing as not allowing the flag to fly, the gay flag. People need to understand that other people know who they are and appreciate them. Otherwise, they live forever in, alone, and feeling different and not okay. For us to ban books is all, is like unheard of in this day and age. What are we afraid of? That a child might read something about sex or about getting abused at home, and maybe might tell a teacher and get some help? I think we have to really do something about that. It's not okay, and it's really not okay.
Ten seconds.
Please remember that the lack of knowledge is ignorance. And if kids don't have knowledge and the ability to talk to someone about what they see and ask questions...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
I'm Mason Craft Miller. As you many, many have known, that to you, what it looks like, I'm not be able to looking at me, but I have a disability. I'm very, very concerned about how disability rights will be maintained when Huntington Beach is required to manage its own elections. Will you assure that the section of 504 of the Rehab Act is maintained? Will you have braille ballots for the blind? Do you have, do you know the formula of OC Register used to determine, how, determine the sayability of polling places with those with disabilities?
No, you don't. I'll be just answering that.
I have never seen a council more dysfunctional than I've seen in recent years. In my time, most of us have not seen a mayor who can't do his job correctly.
Ten seconds.
By my own reason, we can have this debate, Tony. We can have this debate for an hour, but...
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
So I'd like to talk to you about good governance, governance and bad governance. And what I see from this council is clearly bad. When you have an ad hoc committee, part of the purpose of doing that committee is to do research into the amendments that you are going to propose. As of last meeting, none of the ad hoc committee members knew how many polling places were in Huntington Beach to begin with. I have a full-time job, clearly a child, and it's college application season, and yet I had, took the time to look at the election plan that you clearly did not. There are thirteen polling places. It's determined by a formula that the, that the city registrar or the county registrar sticks to. We actually have one more polling place than we are required to have. There is an entire formula for how polling place locations are determined. They're determined to be where people who have disabilities are, where people who don't have cars or have access to transportation are. They are put in locations where our seniors are. What formula are you going to use? I don't think you know, because you haven't done your due diligence. Take the time, spend the time. There's no reason to cram these down our throats. No reason at all. Take the time to get the answers that you need. You know, Councilman McKeon and I appreciate these sessions.
Thank you.
However, they're nothing but a sham.
Thank you.
Next, next speaker, thanks for being here.
My name is Mira Dujanovic. I have twenty-one years. I pay taxes to Huntington Beach. And as taxpayer, I would like to know, is it true that Mr. Gates got fifty percent salary increase from $200,000 to $300,000? If that is true, I would like to know who proposed that, who approved, and why. Also, I would like to know, is it true that Mr. Gates planning to hire more attorneys to increase the cost of our salary that are paid from our tax money? And I think for $300,000 per year, you should be able to do your job. Our policemen and firefighters and teachers putting their life on line of duty for miserable pay. As a taxpayer, I would like to know and to have access to all documents and financial statements for all public events, even that airshow, and to be, to have access to that. If you're hiding behind client privilege, you are using communist playbook. Communist playbook is an oligarch, is a group of the people who are conducting ad hoc meeting without presence of opposition members of opposition party.
Ten seconds.
They're changing the rules, and is it true that they're changing requirements for a very well-paid position for Michael Gates' vice?
Thank you.
I need that answer.
Thanks for being here. Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening. My name is Buffy Channel. I've been a resident of Huntington Beach for thirty-five years. I am gravely concerned about the clearly calculated combination and lumping together of the items on each of the three ballot measures that will likely be on our ballots in March, since the city council majority does not listen to us. We get up here and we speak about this madness, and we are ignored. Why did they specifically put these items together? They should put each and every ballot item separately on the ballot so we, the people, can vote on each item, yes or no? Why not put all the city attorney issues together on the same ballot item? Why not put all the budget and expenditure items together on the same ballot item? If they really want the public to decide, make each charter change item separate. This is a calculated bait and switch. These items were not lumped together by accident. Ask yourselves why? Why are they putting these specific items that have nothing to do with each other together? They think that the citizens that they represent are dumb. They think that we won't read the fine print. They think we are suckers. We are not. Our eyes are wide open. We are paying attention. The LA Times is paying attention. The OC Register is paying attention. The people are paying attention. Ballot measure one.
Ten seconds.
Well, we'll see you on the next section.
Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. That's a great lead-in, actually. The Orange County Register and LA Times, the Orange County Register is paying attention. And here's the good news. They just, they just announced that Huntington Beach is the best place to live in Orange County. We are the best downtown in Orange County, and we have the best beaches in Orange County. And starting tomorrow, we're going to host the preeminent airshow in the entire world here in Huntington Beach. That's all great news. Now, here's another thing. I thought it was pretty cute earlier when someone said the Constitution was signed and there was no photo ID. Well, guess what? There's no photos, and there's no cameras in 1788. June the 21st, when that Constitution was ratified, there was no cameras. So no wonder there was no photos, okay? So photo ID, I think, is, we're making a big deal about this, and I think it's really important that we do make a big deal about this, because without photo ID, you might as well have the police, the banks, and the planes, and airplanes just say, we don't want any IDs anymore. We're just going to have tyranny. So somebody pulled somebody over and said, hey, well, that's, you know, that's, I forgot what she showed earlier, but she's saying that all voter IDs and all licenses were invalid. Whether or not, they're really important. They establish who we are and have some decency in our, in common security in our voting process. Lastly, I heard earlier that the virus doesn't impact our elections, really? In 2020, it impacted the elections tremendously.
Ten seconds.
The former administration had this country going in the right direction. And by the way, MAGA is not a bad thing. It's Make America Great, and we're going to do it again.
Next, next speaker, thanks for being here.
Hello, my name's Jaden. I go to a school online in Huntington Beach. I stopped going to Edison because I felt like I was being pushed on a lot of things that I didn't agree with, and I was forced to learn about those things. I do have videos of it and stuff like that, so if you guys want to see that, I could show you. I'm here just to support you guys four, the four that were just elected. I believe that everything that they have brought forward was something that is helping the city. I'm not here to hate on other individuals, but they are the new ones. They should be talked about more. They make more sense to me, and I can't wait to serve on the youth board, since I have that opportunity, to show you guys the right things. I did have one more thing to say, but I forgot about that, so I'll bring that up later. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for being here. Thank you so much. Next, next speaker, thanks for being here.
Can I just wait a second until they get that turned off? I'm sorry. Thank you. Hi, my name's Cindy. I'm a Huntington Beach resident. I wanted to ask two considerations of amendments tonight. As stated right now, the measure says the city shall verify the eligibility of electors by voter identification. It doesn't state what kind of electors. It doesn't refer to in-person voters, so therefore, which I believe is the intent, but therefore, you could then say you have to have voter identification for in-person, Dropbox, and mail-in ballot. And I don't think that's your intent, and if it's not your intent, could you please put that in writing? Secondly, I'd like for you to think about where you state that we're going to have twenty voter locations. I think when you write measures, it's really important to think about long-term consequences so you're not tying the hands. I'm assuming your goal is to increase access to the voter boxes, but what if five years from now, only five percent of voters actually vote in person? You don't want to have a number like twenty. I think if you can say something like, strive to have voter locations within ten miles of a person's house, or we're going to provide shuttle buses, free shuttle buses for people that are further away from voter locations, or some kind of formula...
Ten seconds.
...to assure that accessibility, but don't state a number. That's just not the best way to write a measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
That concludes public comments.
All right, members, we're now going to file item number two. Staff, will you please introduce the discussion?
Good evening. We do not necessarily have a presentation. We're going to open the floor for discussion between the council members, but we do want to say that staff up here has taken some diligent notes over the last several meetings, and if there are any clarifications needed on past discussion, just let us know, and we'll do our best to give you some answers.
Great, okay. Well, then, members, we'll go down the individual items that have been proposed. Let's start with the voter ID, extensive discussion in the last meeting. I believe there was some good dialogue and some interesting suggestions that we should take a look at. First thing I would like to do is give our city attorney, Michael Gates, as well as Paul, who's extensive municipal law experience. I would like you to respond to the AG's letter that's come to light to all the members of the council.
Okay, sure. So today, the... So today, the city received a letter from Attorney General Bonta. And it specifically addresses the issue, or his objections to voter ID and monitoring of drop boxes. And he lays out his legal authorities and analysis. But a couple of things about the letter, I think the council should know and the staff and the public should know as well. So in the first place, he cites largely cases CalFed and the Haregi versus City of Palmdale cases. Those cases did not have to do with voter ID or monitoring of ballot boxes. Those cases, or Haregi, City of Palmdale specifically dealt with at-large elections versus by district elections. So in a case like this, if it were to, if there were to be a conflict and it were to be adjudicated in court, I don't think City of Palmdale case comes to the state's rescue in trying to establish that these proposals are not legally compliant. There's some other issues in the letter as well. I will say also that the letter reads largely as a policy concern. And it does keep talking about how that these issues are a matter of statewide concern for the state. But a matter of statewide concern is a legal term. It's usually identified by the legislature and ratified or validated by a court. And it's, I think it's a stretch to claim that voter ID in Huntington Beach and monitoring of ballot boxes is a matter of statewide concern. So to me, I think the letter, you know, I think it's specious. I don't think a lot of these arguments would hold up. I think a lot of it's policy, the legal authorities. I do want to point out one other thing that I think may help the council's thought process through this question of voter ID and monitoring of drop boxes and even taking local control of municipal elections. There was a case, it's called City of Redondo Beach versus State of California. And it's a 2020 case. It's a court of appeal. It's a published opinion, so it's completely citable. And the attorney general defended the state of California on elections law as it relates to local municipal elections. And the attorney general lost that case. The court of appeal sided with the City of Redondo Beach. And if the mayor will indulge me
Please.
for just a second, the court of appeal stated in citing, in taking the side of Redondo Beach, the authority for charter cities, California law, the opinion states, recognizes two types of cities. A city organized under general law, of the legislature is referred to general law city, a municipality organized under a charter, like the City of Redondo Beach, like Huntington Beach, is a charter city. As the Supreme Court explained in State Building and Construction Trades Council of California v. City of Vista, quote, "Charter cities are specifically authorized by our state constitution to govern themselves, free of state legislative intrusion as to those matters deemed municipal affairs." Article 11, Section 5, Subdivision A of the California Constitution provides, "It shall be competent in any charter city to provide, the city governed thereunder may make and enforce all ordinances and regulations in respect to municipal affairs." It goes on to say that charter cities adopted pursuant to this constitution, which Huntington Beach is, shall supersede any existing charter and with respect to municipal affairs, shall supersede all laws inconsistent herewith." So the charter supersedes state law when it's a municipal affair. The court goes on to say, "Known as the home rule doctrine, the broad authority of charter cities was originally enacted upon the principle that the municipality itself knew better what it wanted and needed than the state at large, and to give that municipality the exclusive privilege and right to enact direct legislation which would carry out and satisfy its wants and needs." The provision represents an affirmative constitutional grant to charter cities of all powers appropriate for municipality to possess and includes the important corollary that is, so far as municipal affairs are concerned, charter cities are supreme and beyond the reach of legislative enactment. And that's by the California Supreme Court. The California Supreme Court goes on to say, and I'll abbreviate now, that Article 11, Section 5, Subdivision B of the California Constitution presents a final category that gives charter cities exclusive power to regulate the manner of electing municipal officers. It provides planar authority is hereby granted, subject only to the restriction of this article, to provide in all city charters for the manner in which, the method by which, the times at which, and the terms for which the several municipal officers shall be elected. So that is a 2020 court of appeal decision. It was appealed by the state, the attorney general, to the California Supreme Court, and the California Supreme Court denied review. So this is a recent firm, clear law on the topic.
So we have case law on that. And I want to point out, if you don't mind, city attorney Gates, Paul, longtime municipal law, I believe last session, you also pointed out, I believe it was San Francisco case, that was case law that allowed municipal cities like ours that are charter cities to move forward on, on things like this, municipal elections. Could you remind the audience and the council of that case law?
Sure, that's the Lacy case, which is not quite as on point as what Mr. Gates just recited, but similar constitutional analysis, similar constitutional authority given to charter cities. In the case of San Francisco, a charter and charter city and county to run their own elections under the state constitution.
Okay, great. Well, thanks for the clarification. I would also, if you don't mind, I will open and then we'll take other. But one of the amendments, I would like to move forward on this. It was well taken. I said it was well taken at the time about ADA compliant. I would like to add language that we have 20 locations that are all ADA compliant and take out community, just 20 polling locations that are ADA compliant.
You mean residential?
Yeah, take out residential and just 20 ADA compliant polling locations. I would like to add that as an amendment. And it was point well taken from discussion that we had last time. Is there any other discussion? Councilman McKinnon?
Yeah, I just kind of listened to what people had said before. And I think giving us flexibility to, to test this and with the word shall. I think if you replaced all the words shall in the section 705 to may, I think gives us the flexibility to test this, to come up with, you know, an election plan. And it's just not codified with may. I think it's, it gives us more flexibility with shall. I mean, sorry, but more flexibility from shall to may. Yeah.
Okay, so that's your proposed amendment?
Yeah.
And then therefore, we can do a pilot program? I believe one of the audience said for the 2024 election, I believe the language said that we were doing this, if we were to pass and the voters were to move forward, 50 plus one, and the city says yes, it's not 2024, it's 2026. Is that correct? I'm pointing to the city clerk just to make sure we're on record saying if this does Okay.
I mean, that's what the text says.
Because that's what, yeah, I know that. But some of the audience said, and I just want to make sure we clarify that because the audience said it was 2024, and my understanding from the language is 2026.
Yes, it'd be quite difficult to set that up.
I understand that. I understand.
I disagree with that. It's actually how the text reads. This, the city shall verify the eligibility of electors by voter ID appears before the section that says beginning in 2026. So as read, one would plainly read that as the November 2024 election would require voter ID. So, I mean.
I mean, I, okay, I'll move that we're very specific and clear in amendments, that it's for the 2026 election.
So for all amendments? So for all of the proposals, it's 2026? So the phrase beginning in 2026 can just be moved to the beginning of the entire paragraph?
Correct, correct. Just to make sure we're clear. I believe it read that way and so did the city clerk. But just to clarify, we'll do that.
Tony, is that for every measure we're going through?
No, no, that's for the, we're just, we're just talking about voter ID right now. We're only, I'm sorry if I misunderstood what the question was. We're only talking about voter ID here.
Okay.
We'll tackle all the other items as we move forward, but we're only talking about voter ID.
And I apologize for being painstakingly meticulous, but we're all taking notes and we just want to make sure that we bring back what you expect it to be. So for paragraph 705, the entire paragraph is led by beginning in 2026?
Correct.
Correct.
Councilman?
So I just want to address the attorney general's letter. Whether or not you think the attorney general is correct about municipal elections, the attorney general is, I guess, the foremost authority before you go to court on what state law is. And I think the import of the attorney general's letter is that the city will be on its own. And the reason I say that is this. The letter talks about municipal elections being consolidated with potentially state and federal. If what we propose is not legal under state law with respect to state elections, and I think that's pretty clear, then I think it's highly unlikely that the registrar of voters is going to, you know, drop the state and pick up us so that, you know, they take care of our elections. I think the import of this is we're on our own. And so I don't think the issue is, is he correct about, you know, municipal elections? So, you know, we're still in the absence of any kind of guidance from the registrar of voters about whether they are going to do voter ID and handle our elections. I don't think that we've made any progress. We don't know if it's practical, and we still don't know how much it costs.
And if I could respond, I said early on that the ROV would not respond, just like they haven't responded to the municipal elections in Santa Ana. And they're not going to respond until it actually comes before them. That's number one. Number two, the AG's, you know, you say the AG's foremost, but the AG actually took it to court against Redondo Beach and lost in court. And that's what the case law just pointed out, that the attorney general did not believe Redondo Beach was in the right, and Redondo Beach won that case law.
And Mayor, if I may just add, the, the attorney general doesn't represent being the best lawyer in the state of California. The attorney general was elected by the people to represent the state as an advocate in court on disputes. And as you aptly pointed out, the attorney general is often wrong. And that's okay. He can have his opinion. But the, the, the letter, I think, as I said, as a matter of law, is questionable. It's very specious. And so I stand by my comments.
And again, this is case law. This is something that's already been addressed. And the Supreme Court did not take up the, the attorney general's request. So this is the actual case law, that Redondo Beach won that case against the attorney general. Correct?
Correct. Correct.
So this is all we have to work with, though. This is, we're going to take this to the voters. All we have to work with this is attorney general opinion.
By the way, by the way, that's what Redondo Beach had. That's what San Francisco had in case law.
Well, does Redondo Beach handle?
Hold on, hold on. That's what Redondo Beach case law.
Are they one of the cities that handles their own elections?
Yeah. Yes, they did. They did. They did local elections.
Okay, so we'll be on our own. If what happened with Redondo Beach is any indication, we will be on our own.
Okay, and we'll see what the ROV responds with, with, in terms of also not just us, but Santa Ana is before them as well.
But doesn't changing shall to may give us, I guess, legal cover? If we get to that point, we can change course and, you know, not, not institute that election plan? I mean, doesn't, that was my intent, was to give us that flexibility so it's not
We're still, we're still spending money to put it before the voters, though.
Well, and just to be clear, as a, as a matter of law, when you, when you put something like this in the charter, where arguably, I mean, we have, you know, laid out that we have constitutional authority to invoke municipal affairs, you do have to put it in your charter and assert that local right. Because if you defer to the state on all elections, election codes, like we have been historically, and we don't have this amendment, then you don't have the local control. So by putting it in the charter, you're asserting your local control pursuant to the California Constitution.
Right. Anything else? Councilman?
Thank you. So why not just make a vagary that the city council shall set how the elections are done by ordinance?
Well, the language was proposed by the ad hoc committee. It could be, it could take any number of forms. The only thing is, just so you know, and it's, that's a great question, is because there's a whole body of case, there's a whole body of elections code, excuse me, almost a case law, elections code. This is narrowly asserting local control on certain aspects of it while still relying on other aspects of it. So this does not represent a foregoing of, of, of all elections code. It's just the narrow. So the more specific, the more narrow, you know, that's what you're claiming is your local control. If it's just general, like you said, then you would be running your own elections. And if it was, if it was just
No, I guess the question is, does having the language in your charter versus your municipal code have any difference other than we assert in the charter that the City of Huntington Beach City Council will create ordinances to run a, to manage their own local affairs?
So, thank you for the clarification. Yes, you can have it more general in the charter and then more specific in an ordinance to support it. That could be the case.
Right. Okay, so, yeah, I mean, the fact that we're still wordsmithing this before we have straw votes on this, and this was effectively going to go on the ballot.
By the way, that's how legislation works.
No, I understand that.
Yeah, I just like, you know, that's how legislation works. That's what we're talking about.
But not for a single member. This would have gone on the ballot, you know, this would have been asked to go on the ballot on the 5th of September. I think dismissing the attorney general's other points in there, which is we, the several points of we will defend the rights of voters in California, effectively means that we're likely going to go to court on this. And at that point, it also, I mean, I think that we should be making this determination based on the assumption that we will be hosting our own municipal elections, and we have no idea of that cost. And that's, that's not great. We have no idea what the IT costs are going to be. And as I think the only IT professional up here, I can tell you that cost is going to get nothing but more expensive, especially as security continues to get more complicated. I think the email that we did receive from one of the speakers today, that, from the Republican Party, I think she didn't get a chance to read the, the last piece. So that the subject of the email was, it's simple, safe, and secure to vote in Orange County. This is from October 22. The last line, which says, I think, the quiet part out loud, is, "Only Republican victories can we pass election integrity legislation, including voter ID, and finally end universal vote by mail." So this whole game is not, I don't believe, to make voting easier or to make it easier to get people to the polls. Because if the issue of adding more polling places, it's probably cheaper to provide Uber service to everyone that would need a ride to the polling place than it is to implement our own municipal elections. The fact that the Republican Party is saying that voting is safe and secure in Orange County, I think speaks volumes. And then we want to get rid of universal vote by mail, and we want to have voter ID. I think, you know, I think I beat that horse pretty well last meeting about the fact that this doesn't make voting safer, it makes it harder. And none of the ideas and concepts that were brought up by any speakers are constitutionally protected rights. We should be making voting easier, not harder. The fact that the attorney general now believes that this will likely kick us out to run our own municipal elections, I think makes this even a more dangerous, more costly proposal locking us in. I do appreciate Councilmember McKinnon's point of trying to keep this variable, that if we do decide to move forward this, we don't have to have a million-dollar special election to remove it from our charter. And this does not trigger, I believe, I mean, it probably triggers a lawsuit, but it does not trigger our ability to have to start moving to our own elections. Without any advisement from county council or county registrar voters with will they or won't they, we have to go to the assumption that they won't. And we don't know the cost. Could be millions of dollars to host our own elections. And I think Redondo Beach has very, very, very low voter turnout in their elections. So all the if, hands, or buts of do we have to hold our elections now on the same day, which would require yet another charter amendment? Because our charter states that we will be holding our elections on the same day as the general municipal, or, excuse me. Our charter states the general municipal election shall be held on the city the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November of each even-numbered year. So that would be held with the county elections. I don't believe we can actually ho, hold our municipal elections on the same day as the county elections at that point, which would then require us to hold a, another election to potentially get here. I did want to back up, though, about why we're putting all of this stuff on a, on a primary ballot. The mayor said that it makes it easier for folks to vote because there's not so many things on the ballot. Well, in 2022, we had a, I think, a pretty good test case of voter fall off and voter fatigue and whatnot, which I believe is what you were referring to, is too many things on the ballot people don't know. So we had Measure A and Measure O, which were effectively the exact same ballot measure. And in June, Measure A, the folks that participated in that, that race, 53,484 people cast ballots in Huntington Beach in June of 2022. There was an undervote of about 3,600 people. So 3,600 people of the 53,000 people that cast votes in Huntington, 3,600 people didn't vote in the Measure A race. In November, 82,000, nearly 83,000 people cast ballots in Huntington Beach for that. There was only 4,600 undervotes for Measure O. So 30, roughly 30,000 more people voted, and only 1,000 fewer people didn't make it all the way. 1,000 more people only did make it down to the bottom. So large number of people still took, more, more, more people took part in that down ballot race. So I think the argument that people won't participate in the November election, I think, is, it doesn't hold weight based on, I mean, small anecdotal case, but I think a pretty good test case of the exact same thing being on the ballot twice, that you only had 1,000 more people not participate when 80, when 30,000 more people actually cast ballots. So I think that that argument doesn't necessarily hold water. I think it goes to the fact that fewer people vote in primary elections. And I don't think any of this should be on a primary election if I agreed with any of it. So I just wanted to at least make that point. But, and I think cost for this is, is, I don't think the residents of Huntington Beach signed up to host their own municipal elections in the last election. Again, the county has an ISO certification for all of this. And I, it seems that we are now going to get sued if we move forward with this. And I have concerns about the cost of that, because I don't know. Mr. Gates, is your office prepared to, to defend an elections case in-house? Because I don't think that's something that we normally have expertise in.
Well, we'd have to take a look at the case.
Sure.
So we're, we are prepared for anything.
Right. But I mean, likely, likely we'd need an outside counsel.
Without knowing what the lawsuit states or alleges.
Right. But I mean, we don't have elections attorneys in-house.
That's assumption.
We have, okay. So there's that, there's additionally that cost for, again, solving a problem that doesn't exist. There's no demonstrable data that shows that this problem exists and that we're trying to solve for something. So again, I, I appreciate my Councilmember Mosher and Councilmember Bolton in drafting letters to the ROV and the Secretary of State asking for their opinion on this. And I hope that, that the registrar voters comes back and lets us know what that looks like before, if this ends up on the ballot, before voters get there, so we know what we're in for. And I hope, I don't know how we're going to be able to do a financial estimate for this ballot initiative. I think it's going to be big unknowns as to what this is going to cost the residents to have, to solve for a problem that doesn't exist.
Councilman?
Sure, thank you. We've really talked so much about this the last time, speaking more about it now. I do appreciate the Attorney General's letter today, I think, clarifying some of our concerns and also the reality that the cost will likely expand significantly further from the other costs of just having to run an election, which it seems like we would have to do. And I think that it comes back down to, you know, what problem are we trying to solve? Forget the rest of this. What problem are we trying to solve? And from what I heard before, it was access, security concerns, and potential fraud. As has been said before, there have been zero cases of fraud discussed and specified. So just on that alone, we already have our elections run by a stellar organization who has proven that we have very safe elections. And also, if there were concerns about fraud, there are many mechanisms to manage that and to mitigate that. If we were the ones to take this over, there are, we don't even know the dollar amount that it would cost. It's likely millions and millions of dollars. And again, I'm going to revert back to, we've been talking about the challenges within our budgets. We had our libraries potentially on the line. You know, here we are talking about trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist and spend our taxpayers' money on that problem. I appreciate the mayor acknowledging the concerns about the ADA compliance and potentially striking the residential aspect. But the reality is, is there are already 13 locations provided by the registrar of voters. Likely if we're running our own elections, I imagine we'll have to have additional ones, that they might already be utilizing our spaces for these. Maybe we don't allow them to use ours anymore. I don't know. But the reality is there. You know, I, I hope that we can find all of these locations. It was also discussed that there is a very specific calculation as far as determining where these locations are. That takes more time and resources. I think it's interesting that Councilmember McKean talked about the change of the language from shall to may. I appreciate that it could provide us more flexibility, but the reality is we have flexibility right now because we don't have to pay for this. We don't have to do this. So if we don't do this at all, we have all the flexibility in the world that we can take that money and flexibly apply it to other things that our city needs. And the language in that, too, was, you know, this is an idea, we can test this. Why? This is not an H item. This is our charter. This isn't an idea that we can just kind of figure out and hope for the best. This is going to have longstanding ramifications to our community, to our city, to our infrastructure, to, you know, now we're talking about, you know, potential litigation, right? I mean, that, that's the reality here, is the financial implications are such an important aspect for us to consider beyond holding the elections, which as we heard could be, honestly, I imagine upwards of $10 million with the security pieces as well included. We're not looking at $1 million. Even if we were looking at $1 million, that's a million plus more than we're spending right now. That's $1 million plus more than we should be spending on other things. And creating, managing, and enforcing these new regulations or requirements would necessitate adding additional staff, resources, and infrastructure, again, for a problem that doesn't need solving because it doesn't exist. Furthermore, the cost of educating the public about these new rules to ensure compliance would be substantial. And the funds could, of course, be better allotted towards enhancing our existing election system or investing in community programs that directly benefit our citizens. And it's also been mentioned, you know, if the concern is access, you know, if, if it's, I know we talked about that some seniors specifically had in the past walked to their residential polling locations. You know, then again, let's get them access. We have our Surf City on-the-go vans. Let's help people get access. Help educate them. And then I got, again, with the litigation piece, any mistakes or legal challenges that could arise from these changes, given their potential to infringe upon voters' rights, could also result in cost of litigation. And those financial burdens will fall upon you, the taxpayers. We should be, not be adding to the strain of our municipal budget because it is already under strain. In short, localizing our election rules may not only disrupt our robust voting system, which we discussed, the varied and deep security measures the last time that the OC registrar of voters uses, but it also lead to just high costs that ultimately our community would bear. The prudent and fiscally responsible approach is to work within our existing state law and county registrar structure. And that's it. We should be striking this entire proposal because it's unhelpful and solves nothing.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, just, just to reiterate, though, I think changing the shall to may alleviates a lot of your guys' concerns. And like I said, gives us flexibility to test it. And if, you know, if it's too cumbersome or too costly, we don't have to move forward with the election plan. But if it's not, and we can do it, we have the ability to do it. So that may gives us just a lot of flexibility that I think is, is a big deal.
And if I, hold on, if I, oh, go ahead.
No, okay, I'm sorry. One thing I would like to say, though, too, is, you know, I think we sometimes lose sight of the fact that our city staff has a lot of work to do already. And so the fact that, you know, we could kind of take a look at this, see how it would work, you know, look at, it's at least $1 million, right? It's at the very least $1.5-plus million. There is time, effort, resources that would be put into figuring out if this might be a good idea, again, to solve for nothing. And so I think it's disrespectful to the residents and to our staff, frankly, to have them go on a fool's errand of trying to look and see if this is an idea that should be implemented for no reason.
So if I can conclude and just say, it's not no reason. It's bringing back integrity into our election system. You could. We, we heard from you already. Let us speak. And then you could do what-ifs, you could do what-ifs, assumptions. I've heard, like, a ton of what-ifs, a ton of assumptions, and litigation. But again, going back to litigation, this is something that's been litigated already. And we have two case laws.
Voter ID has not been litigated.
Hold on, hold on. No, about municipal, about municipal governments doing their own municipal elections. And so we have two case laws. And so with that, I mean, we have a lot of other items. We've discussed this. We've debated it. I would ask the staff to, or the clerk to do the vote, vote hand to see if this moves forward. And then let's take on the next item.
Can I ask one more thing, too, before we proceed?
Sure.
You mentioned bringing back integrity in our election system. Where is the evidence of the loss of integrity except for people talking about it? Where's the proof?
Okay. The key in our democracy is having voter trust within the system. There are folks that don't trust the system, and this brings in more faith into that system.
So this is.
So the bottom, look, I answered your question. Let's move on.
Hey, Mayor.
I, I, I move that we, that we do the roll on this.
Mr. Mayor, staff had a, Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to, go ahead.
I just have one clarifying.
Sure.
Where Councilmember McKean suggested shall, or may instead of shall.
Yeah. The amendments are shall to may.
Right.
In all instances.
In all, in all instances.
Yeah, and there's one where it doesn't have shall or may. It says the city to provide. I suspect you may and shall there, or may there as well, correct?
Absolutely.
Perfect. That's all I needed.
Okay.
Thanks, Travis.
All right. So clerk.
There's also a shall in the proceeding section in 702.
So Madam Clerk, call the, the vote on the vote raising on this, and then we can move on to the next item.
All right. So I'll go ahead and just call names. Councilmember Kelmick.
No.
Mosher?
No.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Yes.
McKean?
Yes.
Bolton?
No.
Burns?
Yes.
This is 4-3.
So that moves on. So. If we have more outbursts, we can remove you. So, city, so. Okay. Okay. If you want to be removed, go ahead.
Okay, so we're now moving on to the city attorney charter amendment. Who would like to start?
Where do we leave off on this one? I guess is, because this came from the ad hoc committee, so I'm assuming someone from the ad hoc committee.
Well, you guys were not happy with the part where we wanted to strike the, the last sentence, where it says the city council shall have control of all legal business proceedings and all property of legal department. And we had discussed that there wasn't anybody better to make these decisions than the elected city attorney, since that is his responsibility. So you did not agree with that.
Right, but I think there was an amendment to this one, too, right, that added a, that changed this, that got kind of popped in.
Catherine, do you remember what the amendment was?
Was it, was it taking the budget guardrail out and having it stand alone?
Oh, I found it. It's on the last page. Yeah, it takes that out, moves to the section three, new section.
And hasn't applied to, to all three elected offices.
Right. And I think that the mayor was, had, was not clear as to the ability for the council to exceed that 3%. Because this says, all of this says that, I won't, so I don't want to speak for the mayor, but all of this says that in no event shall any such reduction exceed 3% in a year, from the previous year, and from the previous year. So that now adds three other departments that the city council wouldn't be able to move their budget more than 3% if there was a major budget crisis, when currently we're asking departments to cut between, you know, up to 10%. So again, the city council's role is to budget. So I don't know why locking that into a cer, and why 3%? Why not 6, or 1, or 14, or 0%? Not, why can't we just, we can't change the budget ever. Like, 3 just seems arbitrary. And there wasn't really a rhyme or reason as to that, where that number was derived from.
What percentage are you comfortable with?
I'm not comfortable with the putting budgeting items into the city charter. Because if there is a major budget crisis, like there was in 2010, 2009, 2010, after the housing crash or the late 90s, not being able to move the budgets of three departments in order to, because now you're left with Public Works, Community Development, and Public Safety. And Public Safety has mandatory, Fire has mandatory staffing, so now we're down to PD. So if you have, if we have budget shortfalls, personnel is our largest 70-something percent of our budget. And if we're locking, and 15% of our budget is already charter mandated to go to infrastructure. So now we're looking at, what was left to cut is starting to get into Public Safety, which nobody wants to cut. And so now we're into, we're getting down to very small pieces that are able to cut. So I, the language in there, it ties the hands of the city council, and that's, I don't think that that's good public policy.
So we can go ahead and look at the language. The reason this was brought up is because it already did happen to our treasurer's department, who we elected. And she needed to have the resources to do her job. So we know it has happened in the past. We're trying to prevent that from happening. Whether we go through a crisis, we can look at the wording as far as, like, what happens if there's an emergency. But even if there's an emergency, we still have lawsuits. We still need to be defended. And we, our, like, our departments have to be. Treasurer, clerk, they still have to function. So what is it?
Police and fire have to as well, right?
Mm-hmm.
So you're basically, if you're going to lock those departments in, we're going to have eight attorneys, and we're going to start laying police officers off.
Yeah, right now, the way, no, no, right now, the way it is written, it's 3% per year, right? So within the four years, it would be 12%. So it's not like we're saying we're not now if there's any wording.
But if I have to cut 10%.
You're talking about financial crash. If there is a situation like that.
There's no relief valve in this code.
I'm sorry?
There's no relief valve currently.
Which relief valve? How would you feel comfortable to put a relief valve? We're trying to avoid stripping our elected offices. So we elect our city attorney. We want to make sure he can do his job. He can protect us. We elect our clerk. We want to make sure she does her job and she can protect us. We elected a treasurer. We want to make sure they have the resources they need. And we don't have to come, like, we did, what, in 20, when we first got elected, Councilmember McKean had to bring an item to restore the treasurer department so she can do her job properly.
So the treasurer's issues seem to be illegal? Again, like, it was unclear as to how that, if it was against the charter and it was illegal, like, why did, A, why didn't somebody bring a lawsuit to, to rectify that? But again, like, if it's in the charter and the council in 2010 went ahead and stripped it, so why even put, it doesn't matter. They ignored the charter. So if it's 3% and they cut the budget, they'll cut the budget 10%. And it had no protection in the charter already. So why adding additional protections if a council's going to go ahead and ignore that in 2010? It doesn't seem, you're not solving a problem because they just did it anyways. And no one objected.
And you're correct. They, they should have filed a lawsuit. That was illegal. But it did happen.
I don't know if it was illegal.
The fact of the matter is, it did happen. We're just trying to prevent it. I know we would not do that. I don't think, I don't think you guys would do that. But you never know. It has happened and it can happen again. So what are your thoughts as far as, because what Kelmick is concerned about is we have a financial crisis. Under no circumstance can we. a financial crisis, under no circumstance can we reduce the budget.
Well, on the treasurer issue, I will say that it was categorically illegal. In fact, when I took office in 2014, the treasurer came to me and asked for us, my office, to analyze the charter versus the set of ordinances that were passed, and it was absolutely illegal. I mean, there's just no two ways about it, and her, not only was her entire department gutted, but her position was taken from a full-time to a part-time position, so that she was nominally elected by the people and functionally had no authority, the authority that the charter laid out. In terms of budget, obviously, that's, that's up to council. There are, there is a guardrail in the charter right now, 15% infrastructure. So there's a guardrail for budgetary reasons already built into the charter. For the three elected offices, and, you know, finance can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the three of our offices combined, combined annually does not exceed $6 million. And I think the annual budget's $350 million. So if there's a budget concern, it's, you know, I get it, but relative to the size of the $350 million budget, the three offices combined, I think, are less than $6 million of that $350 million. So if there was a 10% cut in my office, you'd be looking at $300,000. So, but, and I will add to this, and this is, this is, this is really important, the lawsuits don't go away, because we don't have the money to defend the city. The legal needs are still there. So if my office were to ever get cut by a council, then all of those cases would then have to be outsourced to an outside law firm at a much, much, much higher rate. So that's a reality that, you know, I'm happy to speak to in more detail, but the lawsuits don't go away because we wish them to go away, or because we're in a budgetary crisis.
Can you go into more detail, so they can understand the consequences of not having a fully funded department?
Well, we have a rolling average of about 40 lawsuits that we defend. We only have one case right now in which the city is a plaintiff to the lawsuit. That's a lawsuit in which the city elected to file a lawsuit that we're handling in-house. As I said, my budget's approximately $3 million a year. We are prosecuting crime as well, and we do have attorneys devoted to municipal guidance for the city, so that's for the 12 departments plus the city council. Paul De La Sando here is here tonight on the taxpayers' dime. So we, we are a full-service, in-house law firm, essentially, and that workload doesn't change, and this council knows that, because we, you guys actually added some resources to my office to help us manage the caseload and the amount of work that we have. So it is a heavy lift, and it doesn't go away because of a budget crisis.
Right, but so does, I mean, fires still burn, and people still commit crime and need to be investigated, and building, planning permits still need to get checked. No one's asking you to defend your department. The issue is the public policy discussion of putting a budget constraint for a department head in the city charter. That's, that's the discussion. It's not the, it's not that the, well, we all, we understand that, like, all the, everybody's department is very important to running the city, if they weren't, we wouldn't have them.
Well, and I think the distinction, Councilmember Kelmick, is it's not just another department head, but these are elected officials that the people put into office, irrespective of what council thinks, believes, agrees with, whatever. The, the people put them there, and as you pointed out, there's case law, new court rulings out of San Bernardino that says the council has to respect those elected officials and their offices and their functions, and can't cut their budget. So these types of changes that are being proposed by the council...
No, they can't zero out their budget.
Well...
But like, if, if you're going 10% across the board...
Understood.
You're allowed to cut...
I'm speaking in very broad, general terms, and I could be more precise.
But, yes, please do, because this is very important, because if we, the guardrail, I mean, again, we're getting to the less, I think, the more broken part of this, but again, like, the idea that we would lock in a, a department's budget into the city charter is not only breaking the current, I think, system, it's breaking the government for future councils as well. And that's, that's the constraint, that I, it just seems ham-handed, that there are other ways to de-politicize the issue that we're, that we're trying to resolve, I think. Other cities have ways of handling that, that they manage the city, the actual department head's salary in a way that can't be cut a certain amount at a point, but the rest of the department can be adjusted across the board with everybody else's department. Because, you know, who's to say what department's much more important or not more important? You know, you can make an argument for all of the departments being extremely important. Again, we would not have them if they weren't important. I, I think they all perform a valuable service to the city and to the residents, and that's what the job of the city government is, is to provide services. But again, in major downfalls, I think locking in, again, it's $6 million now, it may be more later, it may be less later, I don't know. I mean, if this passes, it likely can't be less later, but I think that this, again, sets, there is no relief valve in here in a, in an emergency. You know, if the city declares a budget emergency or something like that, that would make better public policy here than, I think, locking in the city to 3%. And now we've added two other departments in there. And if we have the city clerk's department in there now, and we're going to be running our own municipal elections, and then say, as I think one of the speakers said, we need fewer polling places, because everybody decided to vote by mail, or we go to national ID cards, which I find it very ironic that the folks that all fought national ID cards, which would have made voting very easy in other countries use, don't want voter, national voter ID cards, because you get on a list then. But I think that the clerk's office is now included in this, and we have to grow that department readily to host our own municipal elections, and then at some point we decide not to host our own elections. Now, the city clerk's department is very, very large, and we can't cut that budget more than 3%, so we got a bunch of people sitting around. So if we decide to, a future council decides if we go to shit, may, and the state says, no, you can't do this, we lose, we end up reconsolidating with the county, because it's cheaper, now I have the clerk's department that was all scheduled and ready to go to run the 2026 elections in-house, and now I can't cut that budget by more than 3%, when I think everyone, including that department, but I got people sitting around now. So again, we could get creative with, those people are going to do jobs in public works or whatever, but I think that, again, sets guardrails, improper guardrails that would need there. And again, that wouldn't even be an emergency, that would just be in the course of business. So I think for folks that purport to want small government and to be able to cut government, to lock in the ability to cut government, I think seems rather ironic.
It's, Councilman Burns.
I'm very supportive of this measure. I, I believe that, I don't like the council having kind of the power over other elected officials. The other departments, we have our city manager to control some of that stuff. The other departments, and we can control the budget of that, that's under our realm, but the people's choices of those three other positions, the controls are there to, that if we do have some kind of crisis, the public, the people who chose them can put pressure on them to maybe cut their budget themselves, but we still have some control over them, but I don't like the idea that the council, a body such as this, has such power that can be used as a weapon to maybe torture or abuse someone they don't like. And I just, I don't, I, as a body, the council, I don't want that absolute power over another elected official. I, I just think the people's choice is that important to respect, that we, we shouldn't be able to use it against them, and like I say, there are choices, we do have choices, and so do the people, that if they don't like the choi, that they're not cutting their budget while everybody else is, then they can vote them out, and they can put pressure in any way they want through their voter powers. And that's why I think, I like this measure, I, because I don't want us, as a body, as city council, to have that kind of influence over another elected official's position. That's it.
Councilman McKean.
Yeah, for, you know, for me, I really appreciate everyone's time just going through this process. Like I mentioned, it's elevated this to the level it deserves with, you know, public input as much as we can get, because like I said, we can't communicate with you guys from the dais, unfortunately. And a lot of these measures, there's really, really good items in here, but for me, this one, I think, is, is too muddled to, you know, obtain the discernment from the voters that it requires. So me personally, I don't think we should move this one forward. I just think it's too muddled and too cloudy.
So we skipped over the fundamental question, which is whether this type of measure can even be put on a primary ballot, because it relates to employees or personnel. And I think that Mr. De La Sando and I had started discussing at the last meeting, the provision of the government code or election code, 1415, just Paul, correct me if I'm wrong about that, and whether that precludes us from putting this and the other employee-related provisions on the ballot. So do you or Mr. Gates have any more commentary about that question?
I don't. I will just add that we've had three attorneys look at this. We take the question seriously, it's been fully researched, and all three attorneys have come to the same conclusion, that it's totally permissible. So, you know, if the, if somebody wants to challenge it, they're welcome to challenge it, but, you know, you, facts matter, and this doesn't have to do with employees in the same way that the legislation that prevents such charter amendments to go on a primary ballot was intended to. And there, it actually, 1415 actually articulates in a subsection, allowing us to be able to do this. So I think for those two reasons, I think it's pretty clear. I don't even really think it's a close call.
So, Councilmember, I have a video clip that I wouldn't mind showing of the author of this at the final floor hearing, that, Catherine, could you show that? It's very, it's like a minute long.
Sure.
This is now U.S. Senator Alex Padilla, at the time, State Senator Alex Padilla, bringing forward to the floor for a concurrence vote, SB 311, and the intent, I believe.
This bill would require charter, charter amendment, and charter proposals from a city or city and county pursuant to be submitted to the voters exclusively at a statewide general election, similar to the steps that we've taken to put all the statewide propositions on general election ballots. Amendments in the Assembly ensure that there is flexibility for charter cities to make minor technical amendments to their charters on non-statewide general elections. This bill also allows amendments that are non-employee relations-related to go on any ballot, not just a general election ballot. Those are the amendments taken in the Assembly, ask, I vote on concurrence.
He, so he made, he made my point.
Explicitly states...
Employee relations-related.
Non-employee relations-related.
I think the code is pretty clear, the way the final legislation was written into the code, I think it's pretty clear.
I think it's very unclear. It states you can, you can do, you can put stuff that's not employee-related on the ballot, but if it's employee-related, you can't put it on the ballot.
Well, it's not really employee-related in this context, because we're a different class of employees.
But you are an employee.
And, and, no different than you are, right?
Correct.
So we're, but there are, it's a different class of employee.
Under what, under what code section, though?
Look...
Like, how are we a different class of employee?
So I made my point.
Sure.
And, and I'm not going to sit here and debate this, but I will, I will ask Paul De La Sando if he wants to add anything to it.
No, and I appreciate seeing that clip, because it, it kind of confirms what I had been saying about this being meant for collective bargaining situations, because he talked about employer-employee relations, which is typically a term of art used for collective bargaining, not when you're talking about elected officials who are not subject to the employer-employee relations resolution of the city or any of those regulations. So I, that is an interesting clip, and I'm glad we got to see it. I would be curious as to when, it was before the final floor vote?
That was the final floor.
That was, that was called concurrence, so it came back to the Senate on concurrence.
Because the Assembly added that section, and I've been, I've been trying to track down the folks that actually worked on this back 10 years ago, and I managed to talk to a few of them, and they confirmed effectively that it was designed to stop putting things of importance on a primary ballot, and not to put stuff like this on a primary ballot that involves employee issues. And yes, the California State Firefighters Association was pushing this, because they were having collective bargaining issues, but as a whole, it appeared that this was related to all employee issues, because it does say employee, it calls out collective bargaining separately from employees. So it says, you know, employment status of any local government employee or retiree or any local government employee organization. So it calls them out separately. If it was just about collective bargaining, I don't know why it would include the word employee or...
Well, I guess, my point is, if, if the legislature wanted to include elected officials in that definition of employee, and employees are defined differently in various codes...
Sure.
They could have put that in there, and they didn't. The fact that they included bargaining units and retirees, to me, is an indicator that it really is intended to go to the employer-employee relations type of employees, not elected officials.
Then my guess is city, League of Cities would have came out against the legislation if they did do that, but...
Well, the League of Cities was against the legislation, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't...
The League of Cities was very much against this, because it limited local control of, of your ability to move your charter. So, again, like, but this also includes other employees, right? Like, there are employees, and if we can't cut the budget of the city attorney's office 3%, that would include collectively bargained employees. On the last item about voter ID, you have the city clerk's office that's going to be modified. I mean, you get to the malfeasance item, there's, you're taking away positions from the city clerk, or excuse me, the HR department, things that are normally there. So again, like, from the, reading through the legislative record on this, it's, again, seems that, to be that this is to stop putting things on primary ballots for low-turnout elections. Like, that's the crux of this, is to stop doing that, and the last add-in for the exemption to allow you to, for cities to be able to make minor changes, this appears to be not a minor change and involves a lot of employees at the city, if these charter amendments were to be put on the ballot.
And again, I believe we have case law, but I, we've already discussed this, so the city clerk, call, call the roll.
I didn't get to talk.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Councilon.
Just so specifically not with regards to the primary and general election concern here, and I apologize for interrupting that way. So, first, I think what's really important is, and just in this discussion, actually before I even proceed with that, I appreciate Councilmember McKean kind of talking about his concerns with the muddiness of this particular item. But, you know, I have concerns about that, too, but it's beyond the muddiness. First is the, I'll call it the order of operations. So the ad hoc committee initially put this forward specifically for the city attorney's office, but then in the last meeting talked about the history and the intention and what happened to the treasurer's office. It's just interesting to me that I feel like that that history and discussion at the treasurer's office was really just put there as historical cover for putting this on for the city attorney, and then adding everybody else in. So I think that the order of that is concerning to me. Also, I think, as was mentioned by Councilmember Kelmick, nobody is saying that the city attorney's office work is not of value and benefit to the community. But again, all of our staff needs funds to be able to, to do their jobs. We still need to be able to pave the streets, we still need to be able to provide our services to the community. And as Councilmember Burns said, the budget would still be under our realm, but the reality is, in fact, it would be removed from our realm within these three areas. And I think that it's important that we not pour concrete through the charter over this council's approach and style of governance, and we allow future councils to be able to make future decisions based upon the circumstances that they find themselves in at the time. Obviously, lawsuits don't go away, as the city attorney said. In fact, I can see here that through this, these charter amendments, I imagine additional litigation is going to happen, and the workload will likely continue to expand as long as you're here. But I think that it's important that as we have a population that grows, and we have, as we have needs that change, the council needs to be responsive to those needs, and that includes considering the budgets of our entire organization, which includes the city treasurer, attorney, clerk, it includes everyone. And of course, we wouldn't slash something, and if we did, and it was inappropriate or illegal, that should be mitigated, as was already discussed. So the charter already covers that. I mean, I guess I'm a little surprised that you're not proposing that we somehow expand budgets within this. We're not talking about one side or the other, it shouldn't include anything about the budgets with regards to that. I understand that there's the infrastructure percentage that's included, which was mentioned before. That makes sense. We need to make sure that we are always working to maintain our infrastructure, and that the funds are always there for that. This is a completely different deliberation, and I think that the most important thing is that the council in the future is able to make the decisions that it needs to make based upon the circumstances that it finds themselves in. And we're not able to be soothsayers and know what those conditions are going to be. And I want, there, the council is elected to make those decisions, and as you said, if the, the voters decide that they don't want those council members to con... said, if the, the voters decide that they don't want those council members to continue to make those decisions, then that's their decision. But council's role is to set the budget and it should continue to be that.
Okay, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
What are we voting on here? I'm sorry.
From what I can tell, you're just accepting Section 315 as presented?
Right.
Is that correct?
Right. Okay, that's, that's not what's up there.
Um, it's, yeah, you, Section 309 is in there because the discussion started with the, um, one position for, and then the electeds were included and they put it into, according to my list.
I just wanna make clear that what...
Section 315.
So, this is section, this is the Section 309, Section 315.
Correct.
Correct, changes.
Yeah, so I guess it would take, strike the language originally proposed in 309.
I think the staff report's already been amended, right?
They're separate. 309 is one thing, 315 is the other.
Right.
Right. So, what are we, we talked about 315. We haven't talked about actually the content of 309. So, what are we calling, are we calling the vote on both?
Both.
Okay.
Clerk, call the roll.
All right. Councilmember Kelmick?
No.
Mosher?
No.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
No.
Bolton?
No.
Burns?
Yes.
The item fails 3-4.
Measure fails.
So, members, now we're gonna go to the city clerk, um, that we've discussed. Uh, council, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Vandermark.
So, um, this one's definitely not muddled or unclear in any way whatsoever. Should be fairly simple and straightforward. Um, this asks for a bachelor's degree in business, public and administration or related field. Um, there is no bachelor's degree in business. So, what we want to do here is just clean up the language, um, so that it just says a bachelor's degree. This is in no way reducing or downgrading the requirements for our city clerk. You'd still be required to have a bachelor's as well as hold a certification as a municipal clerk or obtain such a certification within the first three years. That would stay the same. This would simply strike out the part that says in public administration or a related field. As we've discussed before, our current clerk does not have a bachelor's degree in business administration. She's more in the related field and she's obviously doing her job. So, what this would do is just clean it up. There's really not a whole lot of confusion in this. Um, let me see. Uh, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Councilman McKeon.
For me on this one, um, just like the last one, I, unfortunately, I just think it's been tainted. Um, you know, I, I agree with removing ambiguity, but I just, to me, it's, this one's been too tainted to move forward. So, I'm not gonna vote to move it forward.
And, and seeing that, I, I just wanna add, um, it looks like we don't have the votes to move this forward today, but I will tell you, um, I do believe this is ambiguous and if it's not in today, uh, I'm gonna be pushing to fix this in the future. So, with that...
Pat.
Pat.
I think it's poorly written and I'm not sure what Councilmember McKeon means by tainted, but it's poorly written and it's a simple fix and it's something that needs to be done, now or later. Why not now? I mean, we're doing changes. There's, there's a lot of things that we're, we're gonna find in the future, but this is an easy fix that needs to be done. Now is, uh, as good a time as any to clear it up and make, make that charter even better. And why wait? I don't understand that at all.
So, uh, unless there's further discussion, Clerk, I would like to call the roll on this.
Councilmember Kelmick?
No.
Mosher?
No.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Yes.
McKeon?
No.
Bolton?
No.
Burns?
Yes.
Item fails 3-4.
Measure failed. So, the next one's, uh, Councilman McKeon, it was late at night, uh, investigation of malfeasance. Is that the one that you dropped?
Yeah, I'll jump in. Yeah, no, I just, you know, looking at it further, I was talking with, you know, Paul D. about this. Um, I don't think we need a charter for this one. I think we can just do, like, a resolution as a statement of policy. I mean, there's several mechanisms in place, you know, through the DA for public corruption, the FPPC, uh, investigating conflicts of interest, the Attorney General, et cetera. So, I think on this one, we could, uh, just, you know, approach this one through a resolution. So, same thing, I don't think we should move this one forward. And this was the one I brought forward.
Okay, so that's been dropped. Um, moving on, members, uh, flag ordinance, uh, that's, uh, Councilman Burns.
Just like before, I just don't like identity politics. I think it's a solid measure. I think, uh, we can lock it in our charter so it represents what we're all about is just, we are one community under this flag of our government and it's as simple as that. And we do not identify any particular group that stands out special to benefit or to be discriminated against. And we just, we are one community under government flags. That's as easy as that.
Okay. Uh, debate, members? Go ahead, councilman.
We've talked about this, this is the seventh meeting we've talked about this. Uh, and I bring it up again, this is again another amendment of the policy. Like, this is, it's changed. This is the third time it's changed since it was introduced. And now we're looking to introduce it into something that's quite immutable, uh, and costs a million dollars to amend in the future, um, or will require a unanimous vote. There's, I don't believe there's anything in our, else in our charter that requires unanimous vote. So, to set the bar this high for flags, um, is peculiar, to say the least. Um, there's some things that require super majorities or seven, five, six sevenths of the vote, but I, off the, off my reading and, and light research, I don't believe there's anything else that requires unanimous vote. Uh...
I'm sorry, can we have that up on the screen?
Um, so, um, I, this is already an ordinance within the city, um, and we'd likely need to amend it to add this section in if that were, were so the case. But to, um, place this into the charter, uh, again, um, is, is, it speaks to the values, to the constitution of our city. And to enshrine this in our charter and ask folks to, to, to vote for this, I think is, especially since it's already the law, um, I think, and then again, speaks to our values as a city. Uh, I just, I think the unanimous vote piece is, is peculiar. Um, and then the fact that this has changed again, uh, speaks to the fact this is only, this has only been an ordinance for a couple of months now or half a dozen months. Um, and now we're looking to bring it into the charter. I just, I don't think it's good public policy. Um, and again, because it's changed so many times. So, I think as an ordinance, it's already here, but to tie the hands of future councils that may want to do this, um, with a unanimous vote is, I think, bad public policy.
Uh, councilwoman.
So, um, this seems to me like this has gone actually back to, it's closer to what the policy was before it was changed. And candidly, I think it, it, what it seems like is in the zeal to target LGBTQ people, the policy got messed up and this is just a way to fix it, but put it in the charter instead, which, no, I agree with Councilmember Kelmick. This is an ordinance. It, this doesn't go in the charter.
Anything else? Uh, councilwoman?
I agree with both councilmembers, uh, Kelmick and Bolton. Um, just like with the previous discussion, I think it's, um, it, it's already law via an ordinance. Um, you know, as Councilmember Kelmick said, it's peculiar, to say the least, that it would require a unanimous vote of all councilmembers to change and to, to have a different flag flown or displayed. I think that it, again, pours concrete over the council's approach. This council's approach values and style of governance and therefore it takes away the voice of future councils and also future voters. Because future voters might decide, you know, I, I don't, I don't like the fact that it did that, but, you know, I wanna vote people in that might make a difference, might change that. And this is gonna say, no, all seven people, so everybody is going to have to vote the same way to make any changes. And I don't think that that shows that it would be, the city would be responsive to the voters at the time and it takes away their voice. Also, um, I do note here that, except as otherwise provided herein, the city shall only fly or display at or on any of the city's properties the following flags. And then it mentions those flags. So, I am concerned again at fly or display. So, um, you know, the library during Pride Month displays pride flags. Um, this year there were certainly fewer than normal, um, but they were still there as they display flags during other months, not just pride flags. Um, you know, with the different heritage months and things such as that. I'm curious with this, um, the library is a city property. Would, um, the library not be able to display any other flags besides the ones listed here based upon this charter, um, amendment or section? That's how I read it.
Is that a question for the city attorney?
No, it's for Councilmember Burns because he's the one that...
What was your question?
So, the first sentence, um, says, except as otherwise provided herein, the city shall only fly or display at or on any of the city's properties the following flags. It lists the ones that you mentioned before. Um, but what I had questioned was, um, that's, so city properties includes our library and the library celebrates all sorts of different cultural heritage months and things like that as well, and also Pride Month. So, I would read this in that, um, they would not be able to display any flag besides the ones that are listed here. Is that how you intended this or how you read this?
Well, it's just, uh, I believe to protect the abuse of display and, uh, keep it simple that we are not playing identity politics or trying to abuse the, the intention of the section and keep it simple that government flags are what we put on our properties.
So, again, would the library be able, based upon this charter section, to be able to display other flags during various cultural heritage months or Pride Month for that matter? Would they be able to display those flags on the library, which is a city property?
No. They, only in books. Let them be in books. They'll be displayed in books. You wanna look at a book, go ahead and look up a flag in a book. But, you, it's just too ripe because of people like yourself who will figure a way to abuse it. And so, let's keep it simple, no identity politics and government flags flown and displayed on government property.
So, now you're banning displays at the library?
No. You can, no.
Which is why I would, I would say, you're already able to do what you need to do if that's the way that you'd like to move forward with an ordinance, which you already have. So, why touch this here? Why, why bother? You already have what you wanted.
No, I don't. That's why it's here.
Oh, okay. So, you're, you don't like the fact that it doesn't say display in the current ordinance?
It does say, it does not display.
So, what are you changing here?
That it is in our charter.
Why?
It makes it better. It makes it more permanent. Makes it harder to change by, uh, other councils and stuff. It's better in our charter. I think it's properly placed in our charter. That's why.
Do you think, though, that the voice of the people should be heard in future elections as far as the democratic process, so that they can make decisions like this, that, that we discussed last week, and I know you weren't here, but that a lot of these things might be better in an ordinance because of the, the potential flexibility? So, for future councils, if different, if people elected different people to come in, that they would say, you know, they might have a different opinion than you. And then this council, and again, this is pouring concrete on this council's values and way of governing that is unnecessary because you've made the decisions. If you all get voted in again or the same types of values are voted in, then that's what stays.
If I might answer that question for the councilman, um, the democracy, uh, if the people don't vote for it in Huntington Beach at the ballot box, it doesn't become policy. So, that is truly democracy. The people will have to decide whether they support this or not. So...
I think that it's not very clear, though, either, right?
No, I'm just responding to your question about the people...
I wasn't asking you. I was asking Councilmember Burns.
I understand. I would like to answer that because it has to pass by the people 50-plus-one and for, for this become a policy.
But you're gonna make that an invention, standalone item, then?
Well, that's next week. Well, I mean, we'll debate that next week.
And, and I think that that is a really important piece, that this particular item, while I certainly won't be supporting it, should absolutely be a standalone item, not bundled with anything else and should be very clear, I think, with the support and, uh, against arguments, but certainly should be by itself.
So, um, Clerk, uh, we've debated this issue for a long time. Uh, please get the, call, call the roll, um, on this issue.
So, Section 806 as presented, correct?
Correct.
All right. Councilmember Kelmick?
Nay.
Mosher?
No.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Yes.
McKeon?
Yes.
Bolton?
No.
Burns?
Yes.
Item passes 4-3.
Measure passes. Okay, next up, members on the, uh, we're look, talking about the two-year budget, the biannual budget. This suggestion, uh, was meant to, uh, prepare the budget easier for staff, but also builds in more predictability and better planning for future expenses and opportunities to identify revenue streams. This is supported by our CFO. Uh, our CFO, I know you already talked about this. Do you wanna add a sentence or two? No? You already had it. Okay.
Mayor, just maybe reiterate why this has to be a charter amendment because it's listed in the charter that it has to be annual. So, that's why, yeah.
Yeah, correct. Correct. So, uh, Clerk, call the roll.
Oh...
Oh, I, I didn't see anybody that wanted, do you wanna debate?
Just, just for the record, um, if I support something in a straw vote, that doesn't mean I agree that it needs to go, um, that the charter needs to be amended. It's just, I'm agreeing to further discussion about that. So, okay, thank you.
Clerk, call the roll.
Just to be clear, too, this applies to, um, according to my notes, Sections 401, 601, 602, 603, 604 and 605. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. Councilmember Kelmick?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Yes.
Bolton?
Yes, to further discussion.
Burns?
Aye.
All right, 7-0.
Okay, the next item was clerk treasurer, uh, election cycle. That's already been pulled by me.
Yep.
Um, the next one we have is property tax waiver. Uh, I believe that was...
That's me.
Councilman McKeon?
Yeah, no, so...
Hold on a second. Let's wait till the emergency is shut off.
For, for people at home, there is no emergency.
No, no, I'm sorry. Uh, the emergency bell was on, so I, maybe, yeah. Hold on. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so I brought this one forward, um, to prevent what happened, like I said, with the, the Elon and Breakwater purchases where, uh, residents and taxpayers, uh, had to forego property tax on those two properties and then did not get to vote on it. Um, I would like for this to be in the charter, but, um, I think the, the intricacies and, and the level of detail this will require, I think it's better handled through an ordinance. Should in the future that, that we get this ordinance tight and it's, it's not too long and not too much detail, then potentially look at putting it in the charter. But I think on this one, we should, uh, move this forward through an ordinance.
Okay, so that's, we're striking that, members. Next up, Measure C, Councilman McKeon.
Yeah, so, of all the ones that should be fixed, um, this one's, you know, really important. I know, uh, in talking with Ashley, we're, you know, working on language, um, to see if it is possible, uh, to, to pull this off. I don't think, uh, in talking with her, um, they're quite ready yet. So, if the members don't mind, maybe wait one more week to see if it's possible. Um, if not, then, you know, obviously we can, we can discuss that then. But, um, I know we, uh, they are working hard to see if, if we can make it clean enough to, and short enough to, to amend this the right way. So, um, I don't feel we need to talk about it further tonight. Of course, you guys can, but, um, I think next week we might have a little bit more color.
Mayor, can I provide a comment?
Please.
So, the Measure C, just so the public knows, was a community-driven initiative at the time. Um, and it was championed by some councilmembers to help it cross the finish line to get on as a charter amendment. Um, but it's, um, I think because it was a citizen, citizen-driven initiative, um, the wording, um, is a little difficult and, um, there really wasn't, uh, much legislative intent, um, because it came from the community and then there was a lot of commentary. So, it, what we may do, um, and this is one idea that we've discussed, is bring back some further tweaks to the current version, but then maybe also bring another version where we do a repeal and replace, um, trying to maintain, um, the, the same type of intent by previous councils and then let you discuss. But it's, it's a difficult draft, as is it's always been, including interpreting it, trying to enforce it, things like that. So...
So, councilwoman.
Yes, so I don't know, um, if this is a motion or, I think it's a motion, actually. Um, I move that, and I don't know if this is appropriate from the clerk's perspective, but I would make, like to make a motion that we move forward with a charter committee. Since this was a committee and a community-driven initiative, I think that we should move back to the initial intention with our charter...
And I don't... I'm not saying I disagree with your end goal. I just think maybe one more week, and then we'll have more information to make that decision. So, that's all.
Sure. I think that's fine. I'm happy to wait one more week, but in the end, I think that this would be the kind of best way forward.
Okay. That's fair.
And I think that the optics would be a lot better, as has been discussed, and really, it would be an investment in the future of our community and taking everything into consideration. And also with that, I know that there are a lot of ambiguous terms in a lot of the measure, and sometimes you want ambiguity in things, too, so you can make those interpretations. But, you know, there might also be an opportunity, as we move ahead, to perhaps even hire outside counsel that works on these types of things specifically to provide some type of more clear interpretation. And I know you can do that as well, but maybe there would be some additional value in some of the ambiguous terms there might be value in as well. Some of the things obviously need to change as far as like dollars and square footage and things like that. But that, of course, again, could be discussed with a larger charter review, and I'm happy to talk about that next time.
So, Councilwoman, you made a motion. Do you want to withdraw that motion, or you want to... Or will you go along with Councilwoman McKeon and wait for a week?
I'll wait a week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Yeah, I just wanted to... I think this is one of the issues that I think we can all agree on, and I think this is something that we can work through and, I think, find a good solve for everyone. I would be very reticent to have this council put something on the charter that would be... That would wholly replace what the voters put on the ballot. I think that that's... That's... I don't know. I would just... I think I would just have problems with that, other than putting something before them that is amendment for what they have. And I think a charter review commission... I mean, again, let's see what Ashley... I mean, the only thing I would say to not wait a week would be to give staff to stop working on it, and they could go back and do their other jobs that they're all been trying to get done at the same time as having to do the fire drill that is this. But I think that... I think because Measure C-specific, keep it tight, would be... Charter review would be very beneficial. But again, I think this is something we could definitely, I think, all get on the same page with. I think we have, in over the discussions, have had some level of agreement on.
I do share the same concern, actually, now that he said it, though, too, of continuing to try to, like, rush everything in the next week. I don't know. I actually... I think there might be value in not doing that because I think it's going to require some time and energy.
I know, but I know Ashley's working on it, and I talked to her yesterday. And again, it's just one more week, and, you know, what Attorney Michael Gates had said, at least maybe come back with some options, and we'll just have more information at our disposal. And then if that's the process we determine is the best, then we'll have that information. I just think it's just... It's one more week and seven days. Let's just see what comes back, and it might help us with our decision moving forward. That's all.
If we could take this off a staff's plate, one more thing to take off the plate. They already have so...
It's four days, too, right? It's Friday, Monday, Tuesday. Agenda needs to be done like Tuesday night for Wednesday. So, it's not...
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Go ahead.
So, you guys are asking to just put this off, this charter change off, until the general election in November?
Yes, and...
Through a committee?
Yes. Yes, and a public committee and everything as well.
Okay. Now, I understand.
Because we're already calling an election in November. So, the... I believe the additional... Correct? Me if I'm wrong. We're not calling a special election, so additional pages are just additional pages for that, per se? I'm getting nods from the clerk.
It's your item, Casey. Do you want...
No, I mean, we have one more meeting dedicated to this. I'd like to see if there's any more information that comes back.
Want to put it on record? Do you want to move in a second and put it on record, or just...
We'll wait.
We'll wait. Okay. So, but we do have to have affirmative, at least four votes, to move it based on our rules of this meeting. So, Clerk, call the roll and see if we have four votes to move this item...
To October 5th?
To the next meeting.
Continue discussion on October 5th?
Correct.
All right. Councilmember Kelmick?
So, the motion is to continue discussion on October 5th?
Yeah, to the next meeting.
Yep.
Aye.
Okay. Mosher?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Yes.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Seven zero.
Okay. Seven zero. The next one, members, is just to clean up. I believe this is done by the last council in terms of the cancellation of meetings. There's something in our charter that says Monday, we meet Monday on a Monday. But is this clerical clarification that we're able to, as the mayor is able to cancel meeting for lack of quorum?
Or a majority of city council members.
Or a majority of the city council. Correct. Any discussion on that?
Yeah, so I wanted to be clear on what we're actually... Because this is different than what's in the staff report is what's different than what was in the last charter amendment discussion. Did staff update that in the item itself, or is this the only language that we have?
This is the language that we have at this moment. Sorry about that.
Because currently, we can cancel... The majority can cancel a meeting by just not showing up. So, like, I mean, that's effective. But it's just... The original impetus, I think, for this last time was that we go through a kabuki theater of like, are you going to be out of town? Yes. No, you're going to be out of town. No, you're going to be out... Like, and so, we just cancel a meeting because we usually cancel a meeting in August and in December because we don't... Or if the council meeting falls...
Or a lack of quorum.
Or a lack of quorum, right? Like, if everyone's going to be out of town. But generally speaking, we'd like staff to be able to take summer vacation, and then we don't want to hold a meeting on Christmas if it moves down to Tuesday night, and we would have to cancel the meeting by lack of quorum. So, I... Because, again, this had other things attached to it, including the ambiguity of adjourning and readjourning a meeting, there was some discussion of that as well. I do also want to make sure that we're not just cancel... Like, that there is language in the charter that requires us to hold meetings because I could see, again, I'm trying to hit all four corners of the box, that a mayor could cancel a meeting if they didn't want...
But I believe it's mayor or majority of...
Mayor or majority.
Right.
So, but the mayor could cancel a meeting that they... There was a hostile audience at, right? And didn't want to show up. I'm not saying, you know, I'm just saying in general because I want to hit the...
I want to hit it right.
If this could get bad.
Yeah.
And we could cancel multiple meetings in a row.
So, what language would you like to add?
Again, like, I don't know the best practice for this. And off the top of my head, as I was thinking about this, was that we have to hold at least one meeting a month, one regular meeting a month. The Monday piece is actually for...
The swearing.
It's in a different section. Yeah. It's when we take office. And is that contemplated in a different section as well, or do we don't have that language? So, again, I think this is most of the Measure L language.
Yeah, and that's where I took it from, and I thought it would just be a fix. I'm happy to take any amendments that you're concerned about, but it's just a legislative fix.
Yeah, yeah. I don't disagree. But I think that the... I think that... I think it does still leave some ambiguity that this could get abused, and I want to make sure that it doesn't get abused. So, yes, staff, I think I would be happy to move this forward, but...
And then maybe Councilwoman Kelmick, you could work with staff on the exact language for the next meeting.
Yeah, I think that that's fine.
But in terms of now, just the concept, move forward. And again, as the author, I was just trying to follow up with the last council, what they tried to do. So, let's move this forward with knowing that Councilwoman Kelmick, if you have some clarification language to tighten it, we're okay with that.
And for our clarification, so this is a change to Section 303. Section 300 is the one that makes a reference to Mondays, so we're bringing both back at the same time. That's a question.
I would like to, if that's...
Yeah, I think if we're doing stuff that's not right.
If that's a meaningful by the council, I would like to do that.
Yeah.
All right. So, we're going to bring back with language changes on October 5th.
Yeah, but we have to, again, affirmatively move it forward as is, and then with the commitment from the author, that Councilwoman Kelmick will tighten up some of the concerns.
Understood. Well, you'll be voting in again on October 5th?
Correct.
All right. Okay. Councilmember Kelmick?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Yes.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Seven zero.
Okay. Members, charter offices budget. Who?
That was already taken care of.
That was already taken care of. Okay. Okay. Next one is the library proposal by Councilwoman Bolton.
Yes. So, in the past week, the governor signed AB 1078 into law, which has to do with book banning by school boards. And in the school context, what the law says is restricting access to or attempting to categorically exclude classroom and library materials because they were written by or feature certain people constitutes censorship in violation of California law and policy. So, I can see a court easily applying the same logic to our attempt, the city's attempt to ban books from the library, or what was the language? It was make unavailable, make certain books unavailable in the library. We talk an awful lot about local control here. What I am suggesting is that we keep politicians out of the library, keep politicians out of the business of making choices about what can be... What can be in and where it can be, when we have people who are trained to do that. So, local control... We talk about local control, and yet, we're going to dictate what's in the library. That just doesn't make any sense to me. I don't know when this cultural war stuff is going to stop. It's like we're talking about people's health decisions. We're talking about who can offer invocations at our meetings. I don't know where it ends. So, I'm advocating for the most local control there is. Let parents decide what books their children will read with the assistance of the professionals who are trained to help them. It's sad that I have to propose this. Thanks.
Count, Mayor Protam, Vandermark?
So, I'm not sure why you guys keep using the word banning because we're not banning a single book from our library regardless of what the content is. And we're not. And we are not keeping books, as you said, with certain people. We're actually trying to protect kids with books from sex... Certain sexually explicit language, and we are empowering parents. Parents... If parents want to check out a book that shows... I'm not even going to describe it because we've been through that, very sexual explicit content, and they believe this is appropriate for my child, go for it. That we're empowering the parents by letting them make that decision and not leaving the books laying out for children to just open them, and parents are blindsided. Not a single book is being banned from the library banning. I don't even know why you keep using that word, other than it gets, like, the audience shocked as if it's really happening, but it's not. Also, I think this is very premature.
Hold on. Mayor Protam. Again, we gave you your time, undivided attention. Please do the same with all of us.
This is also very premature, as our library has been working very closely with staff, and they've actually made some progress. Ashley's not here. Chris, would you be able to talk about some of the progress, or maybe Travis, that we've made with the libraries?
Yes. So, the city manager's office and community and library services have been working with our library staff on developing policies and procedures. That'll be coming forth in October to the city council to review that progress on evaluating the H item that was provided by the Mayor Protam.
And given that we are working on that right now, this is premature. And once again, we're not banning anything. Not a single book will be banned.
Just to... Just to dovetail on that, I agree. It's just... It's premature because it's... You're not giving the Mayor Protam an opportunity to see this process through. And I've learned a lot. I've done a deep dive on this. I've had some really good meetings with staff, and I really believe what's going to be presented is going to be cutting edge with maximum public input involvement. So, I would just please ask people to give the process a chance, and let's wait until that presentation comes back in October before you guys tear it down.
Councilman Burns?
Yeah. It says, "No member of the city council shall order." Well, that's the way we're... That's... We're not supposed to order anybody to do anything except for... And we're supposed to do everything as a one body, not individually. We can request the city... Things of the city manager, even the police chief. And if he gives us the permission, we can request stuff of other employees of the city. But we, as individual members, really don't have any juice at all to directly appoint or influence or demand. We can ask, we can request, but unless we are one body, we are seven people with one voice, basically, to do things. And this just... I don't believe that somebody like a librarian should be unchecked. It's his job. It... Because, I mean, there's lawyers, policemen, every walk of life. We just had a judge in Orange County arrested for killing. There's rogue people. They have to be checked. And non-interference? No. I just... I believe... I like the way it is now that the city manager has his controls over the employees of the city, and as that, no member of the city council, it's just in conflict with really...
The word "no member" doesn't appear in that.
It's... I'm looking at it right there. "No member of the city council shall order directly or indirectly by the appointment of the city manager." So...
That's existing language in the charter.
Oh, well, I don't...
Right. Yeah, mine says...
No member. Then I would amend it.
Yeah. That's existing non-interference. And so, mine says, "The city council may not," so... Or "shall not."
Oh, this...[1562.01]
We can request the city, things of the city manager, even the police chief. And if he gives us the permission, we can request stuff of other employees of the city. But we, as individual members, really don't have any juice at all to directly appoint or influence or demand. We can ask, we can request, but unless we are one body, we are seven people with one voice, basically, to do things. And this just, I don't believe that somebody like a librarian should be unchecked. It's his job. It, because, I mean, there's lawyers, policemen, every walk of life. We just had a judge in Orange County arrested for killing. There's rogue people. They have to be checked. And non-interference, no. I just, I believe, I like the way it is now that the city manager has his controls over the employees of the city. And as that, no member of the city council, it's just in conflict with really...
The word "no member" doesn't appear in that.
It's, I'm looking at right there. "No member of the city council shall order directly or indirectly by the appointment of the city manager." So...
That's, that's existing language in the charter.
Oh, well, I don't, no member, then I would amend it.
Yep. That's existing non-interference. And so mine says, "The city council may not," so, or shall not.
Oh, okay. I see it now. But still, it's, we, we have to have that kind of, some influence over it. And our, really, our influence as a body is over the city manager. And that's already designed as a city manager system that we're pretty, it's pretty solid in that.
Again, it's just premature. Like, let the process finish and let the presentation come back.
Right. So I think this item's relatively clear in that it's not about members of the council making changes. It would be the city council or other elected officials making determinations on the collection in the library. If the city council has problems with librarians, they can bring it up with the city manager and direct the city manager to do something. But this would effectively stop the council from interfering in library policy and let professionals manage that. It'd be very similar to the city council not being involved in police policy, if you will. Where we hire a chief of police to develop our law enforcement policy and the actual policy of the officers, all of the regulations and policies for that, we don't get involved in that day to day. We pass ordinances and municipal code that allows us to do that. This effectively brings that similar type of policymaking from the council. And so it leaves librarian, leaves library science to the librarians and removes that ability from the city council to be involved in that.
And to retort, to retort, we have a phenomenal police chief. But at the same time, if something goes south with a police chief, it comes to the city council to make those decisions. And they're under our purview, just like the library is. And so I agree with Councilman McKeon. Let's give this process time to flush out. And it is with, like it or not, the libraries here in Huntington Beach are within our purview, just like the police chief, just like the fire chief.
So I guess one technical question before we move on. Is that coming first meeting in October or second meeting in October? So if we see what comes back October 17th, is there enough time to place this on the ballot for, to have the voters look at it for March? If this council were to pass something and then ask the voters to select that?
Let me retort just for myself that, you know, whatever comes back, I still think that the libraries should be under the purview of the city council.
Sure.
So I don't support this. I don't support this at all.
Why not put that policy on the ballot, then?
Okay.
Because I don't agree with it and it's a...
No, no, not this policy. The policy that's coming back from staff.
Okay. We'll see. I mean, we'll see what comes back. But it's a little bit too late for any of the, any new policies to come back.
I understand. No, I'm saying it's a similar, it's a similar concept.
Yeah. No, it's a little too late to get new policies thrown in the mix. So with that...
It seems a little premature, though, on the flag policy to talk about the Olympics too, right? So just...
We know that's going to happen.
We know it's going to happen, you said?
You guys said that the Olympics would come. You know, that's a very likely possibility. You said, "What if the Olympics come and we can't put up the Olympics?"
Yeah, let's, let's, let's not go...
Mr. Mayor, I call the question.
Please. Yeah. I agree. Call the question. Madam Clerk, call the roll. Thank you.
So the language on the screen is presented?
Correct.
Yes? And understanding that more information is coming on the 17th?
Yep.
All right. Councilmember Calmick?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
No.
Strickland?
No.
McKeon?
No.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
No.
Item fails.
Okay. So next up, nepotism, Councilwoman Bolton.
Mr. Mayor, can we, after this item, could we go as the staff report goes?
I'm going as the ad committee proposed in the charter.
Oh, okay. Because I'm having to jump around on the staff report.
I'm sorry. I'm just going in this order.
No problem. I just wanted to understand what you were going on.
Yeah. Okay. So there is an anti-nepotism provision in the Charter, Section 313. And I am concerned about some of the talk that I've heard, rumors, I'm assuming, that some of the, some of these charter amendments were motivated by a desire to have this council appoint the city attorney's wife to the role of city clerk. It's just, it really troubles me that this, you know, a rumor like this would even, you know, somebody would even dream up something like this. Be that as it may, looking at the anti-nepotism, anti-nepotism provision, that could actually happen with it. It does have a little bit of a loophole in it. And so my proposal is just to close that loophole so that this could not happen, as wild as it seems. So again, it's another one of those things where I'm thinking, gosh, it's really a shame that we should even have to be talking about something like that. But yeah, so that's it. That's, it's to add or any elected department head to Part B of Section 313. And also, I'd like to say that if we go forward, the staff report says that the city attorney's office would be drafting suitable language to effectuate this. And I would hope that they would find a suitable way to avoid even the appearance of an ethical conflict and allow someone else, the appropriate law firm or whoever, to draft the language if we move forward with it. So, thank you.
Councilman Burns?
Yeah, I've been involved in this process for a little while now and that's the first I've heard of it. So I'd just be curious where you heard that, because it wasn't heard from, I believe, like, say, our side of the aisle. I haven't heard that. So if you guys are, if you discussed it, maybe, and that's, that's okay. But that's the first I've heard of it, of anything like that. And I'm gonna, I'm very against this amendment.
It's been discussed several times by people who are coming to make public comments, unfortunately. And I'm not saying it's true. I said it's a rumor.
If I might, if I might. What I, what I heard, what I heard was that the city attorney's wife was looking to run for an election. And that's the will of the voters. This measure wouldn't like preclude someone from running for election that has to get a majority...
No. This is an appointment. This is an appointment.
And there's been times where, you know, for example, Sonny Bono passed away and Mary Bono came in. There's been a lot of times where people have been active. When you first brought it up last week, it made sense when you said, "Okay, we can't direct our city manager to hire our spouses." And that, that makes sense to me. But in terms of appointments, like, I, I, I would have to, you know, look at the language. But like, at first, when you said it last week, I was, I was pretty supportive. But like, to prevent someone from, you know, being appointed, you know, maybe, maybe as we go down, maybe Michael Gates's wife is a qualified person to be on a council if there's a vacancy. I don't think she should be ruled out just because she's married to Michael Gates. So I, I do think that forcing a city manager to hire someone, I agree with you. But to say that we wouldn't appoint, look, I happen to think that Michael Gates's wife is very qualified for anything that she ran for office, so...
Mayor, do you mind, Mayor, do you mind if I make a comment?
Please.
Because there's been a lot of discussion...
Because it brought your wife up. Go ahead.
Lot of discussion about my wife, as if I'm not sitting here. And so I'd like to make a comment that there was some discussion months ago among other people about, because it was made known that this was likely to be Robin's last term as clerk. And so there were folks looking to see who might be candidates to run. She was asked to run by these people and she didn't consider it right away. She took her time to think about it. Then she went back to some of these people who had asked her and said, "You know, I will consider running." That's as far as it's ever gone. There hasn't been any discussion beyond that. And then when it became clear that Councilmember McKeon had some concerns about the relationship between a potential charter change for the clerk's qualifications and my wife, she was, made it very clear publicly that she didn't want any part of that or to cloud the decision making. So that's as far as it's ever gone. I think it's peculiar that there are these proposals that are being advanced that have no basis in reality, yet we had proposals presented tonight that were aimed at preventing corruption that we had seen before by prior councils and those were taken a pass on. So it just, this, this, I just wanted to clear the record about my wife. I've never heard the appointment concept as it relates to her at all, ever. And so I would appreciate it if the council wants to deliberate, they can, but it really should be based in fact and not fiction. And that is fiction, so...
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, please, go, Councilman.
So I think you actually brought up an interesting point here of a conflict of interest rules with if someone were to pass away, right? Because this doesn't refer to living or dead in the nepotism piece. So in theory, you could still appoint someone, if they passed away, you could appoint their wife who was active and helped, you know, negotiated everything with them and worked with them on policy. You could appoint their wife, or spouse, I should say, to, to city council, to the open seat, under our current rules in the charter as well. I don't see from a policy standpoint why we wouldn't want to preclude appointing someone's spouse to an elected department head. If they were alive, right? So if someone, if any of our spouses were interested in becoming, if the city attorney, city clerk, or city treasurer were to resign or step down or anything else, to vacate their position, that we would preclude the city council from appointing their spouse to one of those, to another position in the city?
And again, that was my understanding, that was my understanding from the Councilwoman's discussion last week and I thought that was interesting and, you know, but it also says, "or other office with appointed powers." That would also be a vacancy of the council on the city council.
Right. We already can't appoint a spouse, okay? We can't appoint one of our spouses to any, you know, any office that is an appointment. We can't do that.
But you're saying any department head. So for example, if there's any department head that has a spouse that might be qualified, they shouldn't be punished just because they're married to the wrong person.
They're not being punished. I mean, the concept is cronyism.
I agree, I agree with your concept. I agree with your concept for council members to go to the city manager and say, "Hire my spouse." I totally agree, thousand percent. But when we're talking about vacancies in council members, I've seen a lot of very, very talented husband and wives that done a remarkable job in public service. And just because a wife happens to be married to a husband or vice versa, I don't think, in terms of appointment of a council vacancy, I, I don't, I just don't, because again, I've seen very, very good public servants who happen to have been married in their public service.
Are they serving the same body?
Well, Sonny Bono and Mary Bono did.
At the same time?
After he passed away.
After he passed away.
So I think the point here is that you, because again, to your point, you get to this next, you get to our personnel rules?
Yeah.
And it says, "Such persons cannot be in positions where one has access to privileged or confidential information that should not be accessible to the other."
And...
And so if you have, if you're appointing, again, like, if someone were to vacate a seat on the council, I don't think we should be able to appoint...
Based on what's been described?
Right. I don't think we should be able to appoint my spouse to the vacancy. If we all got together and said, "My spouse should do this," like, I don't think that that's good public policy. And granted, spouses have, are different, different opinions, but the whole point here is nepotism and...
Understand.
Right. And now I have two incomes at that point.
Again, so I made my point. I'm not comfortable the way this is presented or drafted. I, I thought it was a good idea coming forward last week, but seeing how it was presented, I'm not comfortable moving forward as, as myself and my vote. But go ahead.
Thank you. I think it's really all about the appearance of impropriety.
Right.
And that's it. It is, it's about having sunshine on all of these things. And people, the people will make an assumption, the people will make an assumption that there is something up. I mean, we get that regardless, without that, without our spouses or related folks being involved in this. And I think that it's important that we have, that a nepotism section like this have its the utmost clarity and strength. It doesn't hurt. So, so one of the spouses or somebody related isn't able to serve during the same time because they're not able to be appointed. I mean, I don't see what, what the problem would be. It just excludes the person in that moment. I, I think that the appearance of impropriety is the most important thing. We should all support a strong and clear nepotism policy. And just as the mayor said previously, he was interested in it. As it's spoken here, I don't think that it really changed anything from what was initially mentioned. So I would hope that all of us would want to have the appearance of integrity and of impropriety, that we should not have the appearance of impropriety. So I would hope that we could just support something like this, because it's the right thing to do.
Why in the charter, why not, if you guys are into doing a lot of this in ordinance, do it in ordinance?
Because nepotism's already here in the charter. It's just slightly changing the language.
If it's an ordinance, somebody could just change it if they wanted to engage in cronyism, so...
Yeah.
There's things that need to be, you know, made permanent, like something that's ethics related or integrity related and then, you know, stuff that doesn't need to be made permanent and it seems like we've got it backwards.
I mean, I feel there's a solution here. I think you guys are close. I just don't know if it's right in front of us. I mean, would you guys be willing to, I don't know, maybe talk about it before Thursday and try to tweak that language?
Sure.
Tony, or...
Yeah, no. And I made my position clear. If it's to ask this, you know, city manager to appoint someone that's related or directly related to us, I think that's absolutely unacceptable. But there are people who can fill in, if there was a council vacancy, that can fill in. I just don't want to disqualify people just because of who they're related to.
I guess like...
So I'm happy to work, but just know...
Yeah.
Just know, right now, I'm, I'm just, I appreciate the Councilwoman coming forward to this issue. I came in today thinking I was going to support the issue, but where I am now is I'm just going to lay off and see how this progresses.
Yeah, because I'm just thinking, if you, if you play it through, right, like, if there's a vacancy, the council majority would have to appoint, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Wait, I'm sorry. I just want to make sure that's very clear, right? If there's a vacancy on the council, the majority would appoint?
Well, I'm saying the way...
I just wanted, I just wanted to make that clear. Okay.
No, I know I tried to get cheeky, but I'm just saying...
That's been done.
Yeah.
Right. So it's been multiple times, but...
Because it's in the charter that way.
Yeah, because it's written in the charter as such, but...
And that's another issue down the line.
That's the later conversation, right? And so the, again, like, we're not okay with the city, directing the city manager to appoint someone's spouse, but we're okay for this body to appoint someone's spouse to a vacancy as a department head or another council member?
A department, say it's a department head's wife or husband, spouse, yeah. I, I think we need to take in and take a look at everybody who's qualified, if there's a council opening.
But it's not, but it's not okay for the city manager to appoint the non-elected department?
No, because, because what happens is we go to the city manager and the city manager, if we say, "Hey, please hire my wife," or "You need to hire, you know, Casey's wife," I think that's totally unacceptable.
Well, that's directed. So I mean, council would, council could direct the city manager, I mean, again, we can't interfere with that, so we would only direct the city manager. So I just don't understand the difference between directing him to hire one of our spouses to go do an unelected department head, but the seven of us could decide to appoint someone, one of our spouses to...
I think I've articulated my position. I'm happy to work with, clean up language.
Yeah, I just don't know how that would conflict with our personnel rules. How do we change our personnel rules, by the way? Does that go through, that'd have to go through some committees?
Yeah, my understanding, and Travis can answer, but that would go through the Personnel Commission.
And we'd have to amend...
You know, she's not here, but just say, Ashley's about to get married and I don't know her husband, but say her husband's just unbelievably involved and would be an ideal candidate to be on the council. I don't think he should be punished just because he's married to Ashley, as an example.
That's not, that's not what we're talking about.
Department head. You said any department, any elected or any department head.
Right, but that's not our, it's our, it's to eliminate our ability to appoint one of our spouses or, or department head spouses. Elected department head spouses.
Okay. Well, you get rid of department head if you say any council spouses, you know, I might be open to that.
Or elected department head spouses. Again, because we, because...
So it sounds, it sounds like, it sounds like this is directed towards Kelly Gates.
No, this is to eliminate...
No, no, it sounds, no, it sounds, let's be honest.
It's not directed toward anybody in particular.
It sounds like it. And I will tell you, right now, I think Kelly Gates is incredibly qualified and shouldn't be, and shouldn't be disqualified just because she's married to Michael Gates. And, and I'm using that as the, an example. And so again, I'm happy to follow up with language if we tighten that up. But right now, where I am is I'm not voting on this.
Let's just move it to, you know, tighten it up and see what comes back next week.
I mean, I think the important thing here, too, is not talking about a specific person at all. The constitution of our country doesn't talk about certain people, right? This is, you might presume that it's about a rumor that was heard or whatever. If we look 20 years in the future, forget this council altogether, I wouldn't want any council to appoint either to, to their own body or to an elected department head, one of their spouses, because of the appearance of impropriety. I don't care about this council in this moment. I'm looking to the future because this is a foundational document. And I would hope that we wouldn't want to have nepotism for the future of our city, regardless of who the city attorney's wife is and what she may or may not do. I don't really care about Kelly Gates. This is about the appearance of impropriety within the appointments to our elected body if there is somebody that is, is not here and we need to appoint somebody. We, we should not be appointing people that we're related to. We shouldn't be.
And to be clear, this is not directed toward anybody in particular. And, and, you know, Mr. Gates, I'm not trying to cast dispersions on you. Gates, I'm not trying to cast dispersions on you. I'm being upfront about what prompted me to look at this section. So, you know, but it's not directed toward anybody in particular, Mr. Mayor, so I just wanted to make sure that's...
Even though it was in your open, even though that was in your open, mentioning Kelly Gates.
Well, no, I'm just saying, I'm being upfront about what prompted me to look at that and saying, it's, I don't, I don't like this kind of stuff, this, you know, so it...
Fair enough. I take your word, and then, clerk, we've already talked, call the roll on this.
Just to move it, right?
Yeah.
This is just a continued discussion on October 5, right?
Correct.
All right. Kelmick?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
No.
Strickland?
Not voting.
Okay. McKeon?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
No.
So it'd be 4-2-1. We'll go ahead and move it.
Okay. Next is Kelmick, 2022, Measure L.
All right, thank you. So staff, let me go back to, what page is that on in the staff report? Sorry, give me one second to find it.
It's actually Attachment L is the full language of the measure.
Measure L effectively, I think, and there was some Measure C language in there that would obviously be pulled out, but it was code cleanup, basically updates some of the dates that the charter would be starting from 1966 to 2022, 2024, I guess it would be 2024 now, and consistently staggering the elections, gets rid of the Monday issue that we talked about before, changes the term casting lots to being a random drawing process, talks about the meeting, eliminate the canceling meetings, change, adds the word or current technology for noticing meetings, eliminates the word "he" and replaces it with "the mayor", changes the term executive and change, for session to closed session, which is the term we use currently, adds more bi-tech, current technology for how we talk about less than quorum, so you don't have to send it, you don't have to mail in a document, you can email it in, changes the term mayor pro tem to vice mayor, but I'm not, I'm not tied to that if that's what's holding anybody up, changes the director of finance to CFO a couple of times, clarifies some pronouns from "it" to the city council, and... Yeah, and then if we don't have to, if our Measure C stuff's pulled, and then it talks about the charter review, that it doesn't actually, and I think staff's interpretation of this in the staff report was a little confusing, that it doesn't require the charter review, it just requires the city council to talk about it. So I just wanted to make sure that that's, it doesn't, it's not requiring it to conduct a charter review, and I think that was a little unclear in the staff report. So it just says that every 10 years from the end of the last charter review, city councils should probably bring an item forward to talk about, do we need to review the charter, do we not, and then move on from there. So I just thought that if we're going to clean up the code, and this was going to go on the ballot, that we might as well do a quick code cleanup minus the Measure C piece in there that we'd talk about next time. So that was, that was my item.
Any discussion, members?
Can we just a little, go back up a little bit?
Councilmember Burns, too, I don't know if you have your binder with you, but if you, if you do, it's in Section 4, like, the second page, which is under here, it's Charter Amendment Measure Number 1 in the book that we have, and it's everything except for Item 10. It's a little easier to look at it that way.
It's not an easier, and I think we already agreed on...
I can read that better than that.
And we already agreed on three to move forward. Number, number three was the canceling regular meetings.
I guess maybe you could like combine those two, right?
I mean, you could combine this all into one. It's effective, just language cleanup, and, I mean, some other cities actually allow their clerk to do this without charter amendment.
But I'm saying you could combine it with the canceling of meetings.
Yes, it would be, yeah, I would imagine it would all be included in some, again...
I know you brought it up, but I do like mayor pro tem, it's just...
Yeah, I was just gonna say, get rid of that vice mayor stuff.
I'm not, I'm not holding on to that one. I...
I will tell you, I'm not for the mayor pro tem change either.
That's no problem. I'm not, I wouldn't hold up other cleanup for that.
I think that's the one I was like, oh, where is it, where is it?
I think everything else is, you know, is fine. But like I said, if we could combine it with the canceling of meetings, that makes sense.
I'm okay with moving this forward, but I'm gonna dig a little bit more, and if I have any questions, I'll, I'll reach out to you.
You can talk to me as well, because I was on that, like I said, the charter commission.
These were, I think, Mr. McKeon, you voted for actually all of, almost all of these in the Charter Review Committee as out.
Clerk, call the roll.
Kelmick?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes, but for further discussion.
Okay. Strickland?
Aye.
McKeon?
Yes.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
So this will be discussed again on October 5?
Correct. It moves forward. Councilmember Kelmick, Staff, 302 change?
307 change or 302 change?
Mine says, Councilmember Staff, 302 charter change. My, or was that in the...
That's City Council Compensation.
Yeah.
302.
No, the next one is Council Salaries, 302 as well.
I'm getting there.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, here it is. It's 307, 401, not interference and powers, so, yeah, so it, effectively, I'm not looking for any budget ask at this point. This is more of a future growth. If we're gonna amend the charter, that this would be, I think, helpful to city council. The staff report basically says that, let's see, Irvine and Anaheim have paid staff positions. Santa Ana does too, actually, but they do it through a consultant, or they do it through like an independent contractor, where the council actually gets a budget of a certain amount of money, and then they can go hire a contractor to go help them staff at events. I also don't think that the council analyst's position would be an appropriate salary for it, but again, I'm not talking salaries at this point. It would likely be more of an admin position as opposed to a technical admin, a technical analyst, but that could always grow into that. So again, the concept for this was to allow for staff in the future, future councils could budget for it if they wanted to. This does not commit the council to doing any of that. It just would free them up to allow, allow them to hire, allow the council to provide budget to have staff for them. Again, this job is, and this could be taken in tandem with the next item, which is council compensation, to alleviate, transfer some of that load to an admin to be able to help council with constituent services, I imagine, or be staffing at events, getting your book together so you know what you're actually talking about if you've got to go give a presentation, takes workload off of city manager staff as well. So again, this just, this doesn't budget anything, doesn't cost anything, just creates some flexibility for future councils or this council if it wanted to, to create some staff positions for the council that would be, that you could actually have direct control over instead of the non-interference issue with the city manager.
Members, discussion?
Just with me with the same kind of logic as before. I just think there's, there's too much here. It's too muddled for me, for the voters to use discernment, so that's, I just think it's too much, personally.
Anything else, members? Clerk, call the roll.
I just appreciate the flexibility. I'm sorry, that's okay. I appreciate the flexibility to have this available, and I, we would have to be clear with the voters about what it means, so I understand Councilmember McKeon's concern with that. But I do think that it would provide flexibility in the charter for a future decision or not, and so I think that it's trying to create the potential for a more appropriate governing structure where it provides for that support, which currently isn't allowed. So, and I think this is the only place that you could make that type of decision versus in the other ones we talked where it could maybe be ordinance, and here, it has, it would have to be in the charter.
So for our clarity, those of us who are taking notes, the straw poll you're about to take is council member staff only, or are, okay, thank you.
Yeah, but I believe he's gonna go to council salaries next, so this is just the staff, right?
This is just staff.
Just city council staffing, correct?
Right.
Okay. Now I get it. Councilmember Kelmick?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
No.
Strickland?
No.
I'm sorry?
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
McKeon?
No.
No? Bolton?
Yes, for further discussion.
Okay. Burns?
No.
Okay, the item fails for three.
So the next is the council salaries. Councilman, you can open.
Thank you. So again, this is, this was an item that, as I was looking back into the past histories of councils, to kind of understand, like, who's able to serve on council. For the last 30-something years, there's been four types of people that have served on city council: retired people, independently wealthy people, teachers, and self-employed people. And most of them are all, if not all of them, are homeowners. Half our city rents, a lot of our folks have full-time jobs that would preclude them from being able to serve on city council, and the compensation for city council members is not enough for you to be able to quit your job and come serve your community. So again, I think this is, unfortunately, because of the process is slightly rushed, and so staff's not able to do, I think, a full formal dive into additional cities and different constructs for what this could look like. I mean, some cities peg it to judge, judges' salaries for the county, some peg it to median income, that you set salary at 50% median income, so that somebody could either cut back their hours or work part-time in addition to this position, and if we're not gonna allow for council staff, then potentially paying council more. It is interesting, the state just passed SB 329 for general law, non-charter cities, that it looks like the math for a city that is from 150,000 people to 250,000 people, the compensation would be about, it'd be $2,500 a month as opposed to the 1,600 that roughly we get now. So it would be a, still not a great increase, it's still not enough for somebody, I think, to quit, but I think, and again, I wouldn't really want to do something like this unless it provided for some, you know, for someone to be able to sustain probably 50% of their family and having somebody else work, but again, this is to create some diversity, and I had staff pull a few more comps. Places like Chula Vista actually pay between $62,000 and $73,000 a year, whereas we get between $19,000 and $27,000, I believe, for the mayor. The council makes, gets paid about $19,000 a year. I don't know if the cost per capita is actually a relevant number. I think, I understand what staff is trying to do there, but I don't know if it actually, it gets skewed with some of the smaller cities, where it's like Seal Beach is paid $7,200. I don't know if your population is linear to the amount of time and effort you have to put in to being on city council, so I don't know if that, I understand that we're just trying to get some context and relevance between the two, but again, I think, you know, there's some cities, obviously, that are much larger, and it's a much bigger job, a much larger city, but I think cities like Oceanside and cities like Chula Vista, I think, set a medium. And again, I don't know if, I mean, obviously, non-charter cities are paying their council members more, and the state legislature has recognized that that is something that is useful. But again, like, I, this is just more to try to get some diversity on council because I've, you know, talked to people that are like, "Yeah, I want to serve, you know, I'd love to run for city council. It's a full-time job and it doesn't pay. So come on down and support your community." And so I think that we could potentially get some, some different folks that have a different background that could serve on council. So that's really, again, this is kind of rushed, so I don't have what it should be or what it should be pegged to, but it's just, you know, something that I wanted to at least have staff dig into.
Anything else?
Yeah, real quick, I'm totally against this. Although, yeah, everybody would like more money, but be honest with you, I'm more into public service than self-service, and I think this is a definite conflict, and it just, it's, I don't like it, but it's bad.
I would just be clear that this wouldn't go into effect for anyone currently sitting on the city council. It would go into effect, I would even argue that it would go into effect after everyone on this council is gone, so you could argue that it wouldn't be for anyone here, so that you could say that it would go into effect in 2030. But again, that does put the bar out a little bit too, a little bit far. I could say 2026 or whatever, but again, like, I think it's, this is not for us. This is to create some diversity on the backgrounds and occupations of council members.
Any other discussion? Go ahead, councilman.
I agree. I think that the diversity is the key piece here, because I think councilmember, you mentioned before, it was retired people, teachers, where were the other, real, what were the other two?
Self-employed or independently wealthy.
Right. So, I mean, I want people who are renting, people who maybe are just right out of high school even. You know, I think having different life experiences would help, and I think would help this council to make decisions with different perspectives and through different lenses, and I think it's very challenging for people to make the decision. I don't think people even necessarily understand what that looks like either, because it is considered part-time, and to really do the job justice and the community justice, it's much more than that. And I think if it were to benefit us, I would not be comfortable voting for something like this or supporting it, because it would look like it would be benefiting us, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't want that. But I think that, again, trying to create a more diverse council to enable more people to participate, I think would be wonderful.
For, for me, just philosophically, I'm against it because this is supposed to be public service. I mean, I'm an example where I have a full-time business, I have a baby. I knew those things going in. I did not do this for the pay. I did this to serve my community. So just philosophically, philosophically, I'm against that. I don't like running government. I don't, even though it's small, I just don't, philosophically, if you want to be on council, it's because you want to serve your community, and you're not doing it for the pay. I know it's a full-time job. It is. I have two full-time jobs. I totally get it. I knew that sacrifice I'd have to make. So for me, I'm just philosophically against this.
But you could make that sacrifice, though. That's the question, right, is that, like, you're, you are able to make that sacrifice. I am able to make that sacrifice, but what if you couldn't, you had to choose between living, making rent and doing that, or wanting to serve your community, and not being able to do both? Like, that's what, that's what the goal of this is, is to, you can't quit, you have to work nights, or you have to work nine to five, nine to six. You have no flexibility to come to study session at 3 o'clock at your job. You can't commit that, and you can't commit the daytime hours to go to the events and to meet with constituents. You couldn't do it to service without quitting your job or cutting your hours back to part-time. Like, that's what this goal is. This goal is not to grow government. It's to, again, you were able to sacrifice this. All of us are able to sacrifice their incomes from their jobs for this, and it is, it is a sacrifice, but there are some that cannot make that happen. Like, they can't, you could not live on $20,000 a year.
Right. Again, I don't, philosophically, I don't think this is like, should be viewed as a paid position. Like, you don't get elected to have a job, right? So I just, that's why I'm against it philosophically. Like, you don't run for an elected position to get paid, right? You're doing it to give back to your community, and if your life, if your life allows you to do that, then that's why you run for office. So that's, that's where I stand on it.
So we're going back and forth. City clerk, please call the roll.
So is this, are we voting to whether or not this even moves to October 5?
Correct.
All right. Councilmember Kelmick?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
No.
Strickland?
No.
McKeon?
No.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Nope.
Item fails for three.
Okay. Next up, Ethics Commission?
I think, I think that got wriggled in. I think Councilmember McKeon's concept to pull this out and talk about it in ordinance, I think, is something that we can get.
Yep.
We can get to. I don't know if the charter, I mean, the charter allows us to do something like this in ordinance, so I don't think we need to enshrine that.
What about appointed charter officers?
Oh, yeah. I think that at this point, like, we should ask the voters, we should have appointed charter officers as opposed to elected charter officers. I think we've seen, either by rumor or by actuality, that the, we are one of the very few cities that has elected positions left in their department heads, whereas the council controls several as, most of the aspects of the government. It simplifies the government's role, it simplifies our elections, but I think that the politicization of those other positions now has, I think, created an imbalance and then potentially broken the government here, and I can see why there's only 10 cities that have elected city attorneys. There's only 10, you know, there's very few cities that have elected city clerks, very few cities that have elected city treasurers. I think that those roles, and especially with modern technology now, has allowed more participation where the elected positions, I think, are no longer necessary, and I think that it's, it's created a broken system that is over-politicized in this city, and so I think that we should ask the voters if it's time to go back to appointed positions.
So are you asking that we no longer have elected treasurer, clerk, or attorney?
So are you asking that we no longer have elected treasurer, clerk, or attorney?
Correct, that they should be appointed by the city council, or the city manager. I actually don't even know who they should be appointed by. I think, I think the treasurer and the clerk should probably be appointed by the city manager, and the city attorney should be appointed by the city council.
Well, one of the reasons that all the other chart, that several of the other charter amendments didn't pass, because the community was very clear that they want to have a say in who is our attorney, clerk, and our treasurer. So I cannot support this. I would, I'd rather let the voters decide.
I, I just argue we haven't asked him in a while, so I figured it'd be time to ask him again.
Okay. Discussion scene done, clerk call the roll on this.
And this for discussion on October fifth, correct?
Yeah, to see if it moves forward to October.
All right, very good. Kelmick?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
No.
Strickland?
No.
McKean?
No.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
No.
Item fails, four-three.
Okay, the next, councilwoman Kelmick, city attorney, political participation.
As I was reviewing other cities, I believe, it's either Oakland or San Diego, I can't remember at the top of my head at this point, has a provision, because I found it odd that our city attorney campaigned in twenty-eighteen and in twenty-twenty-two with what it would effectively be his client. And so the city has, City of Oakland, I'm sorry, it's in the, it's in the language, has language in their charter that prohibits the city attorney, while elected, not someone campaigning to be city attorney, from publicly endorsing, urging the endorsement of, participating in the campaign of other city-elected office, other, a candidate for other city-elected office, other than for the city attorney, in which they obviously can run themselves, or they can support a city ballot measure, or be an officer, or they can't be an officer or director in a organization making political endorsements as well. So I, I think that that was really great language, and I think it helps depoliticize the, the system that we have here in Huntington Beach if we continue to have an elected city attorney. So I proffered the language from Oakland. It seemed, it seemed rather, rather helpful to, I think, create that separation between the departments.
And mayor, may I make a quick comment?
Sure.
So I saw the language in Oakland's charter, and it hasn't been challenged yet on free speech grounds. But this is definitely a free speech issue that I would caution or recommend to the council that is a legitimate and real concern.
Mr. Gates, I just wonder how you can give us a legal advice on something that would affect you personally?
Well, because it's a fact, it's the First Amendment. And if you would prefer, Paul De La Sondra can offer the same commentary. It's, it's common knowledge.
Sure, but like, again.
I'm sorry, is there something written on this? Because we still have compensation up there, I'd just like to see it up on the screen. Nothing written.
There's an, I mean, in the staff report, on page ten, there's a, again, this is a, there is the, the language from the Oakland's charter.
And mayor, to answer councilmember Kelmick's question, this has nothing to do with my pay or anything like that. This is just pure free speech.
Right.
So that's, for those, for that reason alone, I'm allowed to comment on it.
But it, I mean, it's about your job, right? Like, the ability to run for election and.
No, it's about free speech. It's an attack on free speech.
I mean, this goes both ways. Our city clerk, Robin Estenislau, did create a video endorsing you when you were running in twenty-twenty as well.
I'm happy to extend this to other, to the city clerk and the city treasurer position as well.
You made changes to the charter because you don't like the results, you just didn't like the results. But I was going to mention, it would be, probably be a violation of his First Amendment, right? I mean, he doesn't give those up just because he runs for office, none of us do, actually.
Actually, we give up, I mean, quite a few rights to be sitting on city council. Yeah. That we can't, like, four of us can't get together and talk about city issues, right? Without calling a public meeting?
On our, in our personal lives, we can talk about whatever we want, we don't talk about city issues.
Four of us, what I just said, though, four of us can't get up together and talk publicly about city issues.
Campaigning is different.
There's, I think, issues.
Campaigning is, there's a difference.
Four people that are elected officials can't get up and talk about city issues, probably even at a campaign event.
Well, we weren't campaigning, we weren't on council then.
But that's not my point. My point is that if you are currently, this only addresses people that are currently sitting in that position. And I'm happy to amend that to include the city clerk and city treasurer position.
Is there other discussion on this?
Well, I definitely agree with the effort to try to depoliticize a lot of what, what goes on. And, you know, the way I read this is, as councilmember Kelmick said, this is maintaining a strict ethical policy of not campaigning against your client, because, you know, it's not appropriate to appear to be disparaging your client. So, you know, I don't view it as a free speech issue, because I do agree, we, we do give up a lot of aspects of our ability to speak freely when you are in an office.
And mayor, just so the public has all the information, the client that I represent is the city. This is the board of the directors for the city. My client is still the city, though. And so it's, if there was any issue about an attorney engaging in any nefarious or wrongdoing against the client, they can report me to the State Bar of California. And you can just do a quick Google search, State Bar of California. And there's, you can go to the attorney page and you can lodge a complaint. So if there's anybody who thinks that there's been any wrongdoing, there's already recourse for that. Otherwise, setting that aside, it's just purely a free speech issue.
It's also the appearance of impropriety. I would just hope you'd make a better choice.
So with that, city clerk, call, call the roll, let's see if this moves forward.
Councilmember Kelmick?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
No.
Strickland?
No.
McKean?
No.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
No.
So the item.
Next moving forward, I'm sorry, thank you.
That's okay, fails three-four.
Next movement, Mr. Kelmick, councilwoman Kelmick is Office of Legislative Council, Legs Council.
Yeah, again, this was a goal, as I was reading charters, to find, just, as, again, the mad dash, to, to try to see if we can have some good, good governance policy in here. I came across the Office of Legislative Council that Chula Vista has. This was an interesting concept to me. Again, it, it potentially resolves some of the conflict that the previous council, as I stated last time, had with the city attorney. And then it allows the city attorney to go do city attorney stuff, and allows the city council to have, to have someone to talk about regulation, policy, things of that nature. So, again, it doesn't, it doesn't step on the, I mean, I think the city attorney, I don't want to speak for him, but will likely argue that it steps on his toes. But I felt that it's kind of separated some of the, the job criteria that allowed the city attorney to go fight the battles in court and leave some of the minutia up to someone else that the city council appoints. That was it, just seemed, it seemed to me to be a simpling simple to, to try to, again, depoliticize and de-escalate the, the politics and the kind of organization of the government we currently have.
Any discussion, members?
Yeah, sure, I, I agree. It would be great to have some resources to help us do things like figure out how to draft provisions, or even figure out whether something makes sense to try to pursue before we pursue it. Because right now, I, I don't feel like we have that.
Same logic as before for me, just too much, it's too muddled, you know, for the voter, so I won't support it.
It would just be nice to have resources to be able to make those, to decide whether to move forward on things like that. And I don't think we have them now.
Okay, city clerk, call the roll.
Okay, and again, to move it forward to October five, councilmember Kelmick?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
No.
Strickland?
No.
McKean?
No.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Nope.
Item fails, three-four.
Item fails. Next up is term limits, councilwoman Bolton.
So, thank you. So now that we are, I guess, sticking with elected department heads. So when I was a legislative staffer in Congress, I used to be opposed to term limits. And the concern was, you know, if you had legislators term out, then all of the expertise would reside with staffers and lobbyists. And, you know, there were really bright people that I was very proud to work with. This was a long time ago. But, yeah, you know, we didn't want, I didn't want a situation where all of the expertise, you know, resided with staff. And, you know, staff basically controlled everything. So things have changed a lot. Congress, as another example, accomplishes very little right now, I think everybody would agree, other than bickering and soundbiting. So, and that goes on even within the political parties, so both sides. I'm fascinated by studies of term limits, because there's been a lot of movement among states to adopt term limits for their legislatures in the last several years. And these academic studies have concluded that the longer people stay in office, the more partisan they become, not less. So, you know, some of the concerns motivating states to decide to impose term limits, or things like anti-corruption, concerns about cronyism, concentrating too much power in one person's hands, those are all legitimate concerns. And when it comes to term limits, there's also this question, and I think it's kind of mentioned in the staff memo, that, well, one of the disadvantages might be that we turn over, and these department head positions might reduce the pool of qualified candidates. But, you know, so, for example, we'll take the city attorney, not to pick on you, but I think the city attorney ran unopposed in two thousand and eighteen, is that right?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, and then there was only one competitor in two thousand and twenty-two. So the fact that this could be a lifetime job is not attracting more people to run for these positions. So I think we can put that argument to rest. So, you know, balancing out, depoliticizing versus, you know, the possibility that expertise is lost, I think the balance is in favor of depoliticizing and having the same term limits for the department head positions as we have for city council.
But I guess the counter to that is that those are paid positions, though, right?
Yeah, those are paid positions, but what differences pay make?
Well, I mean, that is essentially a career, where like city council, like I mentioned earlier, like, you don't run for office to get paid. But in that situation, like clerk, treasurer, attorney, like, yes, they're elected, but it's also a career at the, at the same token. So why should there be term limits on that?
Well, aren't they running to be public servants?
But these are different, these are paid, no, yeah. Again, these are paid, it's defined what their pay is through the budget, right? Where the council is so minimal, it's, it's almost, you know, no pay. So that, to me, that's the difference, is like, these are somewhat careers. Yes, you are running for, to get elected by the people, but you are getting paid, like, you know, commensurate to basically somewhat what the private sector would, would pay.
But legislators, state legislators and federal legislators get paid. And they have, well, state legislators at least have term limits.
I believe, I think we have, I think there is limits on every term limits. We already have it, it's called the elections. If the people don't want them, they can vote them out, and that's a limit. And I just, I think it's, it's the power of the people in that aspect, and the elections speak volumes.
By that logic, then, should the council not have any term limits either?
Right. And, and people don't pay attention to the department head elections the way they pay attention to the city council elections. I mean, you ask the average person on the street, who's the city treasurer? I doubt they'll know the answer to that question.
So if I, if I might, it's interesting, because I believe Mr. Gates beat an incumbent when he first got elected. And that city attorney failed to get the vote of the people. And councilwoman, I, I, I respect what you said, but I'm just the flip the opposite. I was out there in nineteen ninety pushing for Prop one forty, term limits. And I used to be a staff member in Sacramento. And I will tell you, before term limits, there was a lot more collegiality, there was a lot more institutional knowledge among members, there was a lot more give and take. I, I actually think that our state government was far better before the term, before term limits went in. And then when term limits came in, I, I just don't think that the same kind of relationships are built and the collegiality and the institutional knowledge. And it does seem to run by staff and institution and lobbyists. And so I, I respect where you're coming from, it's funny, because you said you were against them, and I was for them, and then we just flipped. And I respect that, but I'm not supportive of this, because I agree with councilman Burns, a term limit is every time that you go out before election. And city attorney, Gates is a classic example of someone who beat an incumbent here in Huntington Beach.
I have one more thing.
Go ahead.
I think just the one interesting thing that I've heard from the community time and time again is they don't want career politicians, and that's exactly what gets created here, and that's all.
Well, I agree with councilmember Burns as well. If they don't like the job they're doing, we just vote them out, that's it. I mean, it's fairly simple.
So clerk, call the roll on this.
Kelmick?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
No.
Strickland?
No.
McKean?
No.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
No.
Item fails, three-four.
Okay. Last on the item, at least on my agenda, is council vacancies. This is a suggestion came from Amory Hanson. I believe it's very simplistic, that if there is a council vacancy, you appoint until the next scheduled election. It's a system that works when, for example, US Senator vacates, governor appoints, and only appoints until the next scheduled election. And I would like to see this move forward, because I think that's good governance. I don't think anybody should have a, a full term as an appointment, that they should be able to face the voters in the next scheduled election. So with that, I, I would urge an eye vote on this, but discussion? Any discussion?
I just, I just want to be clear. Can we, do we have three twelve?
Right there.
Okay, so it's, it's a fact, it was what, because I know we had some discussion about what was in the last charter amendment piece in this, and you're comfortable with the same language?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Twenty-six? What are you saying? What, what are you saying?
Oh, no, no, the last, the last meeting, because it was like, late. There was some discussion about, the same amendment that was presented last time. So it's the same language that was brought forward from the charter, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I think that that's, that resolves a lot of the issues that,
Yeah.
that, that we're running to before. Like, I, I agree that you shouldn't have to serve the whole term, or shouldn't, shouldn't serve the full term if we're going to appoint somebody. Because the reason for the appointment is to save the special election that could happen just after another special election, and we're, you know, in the whole bunch of money. So I appreciate that we're willing to bring this forward again.
Great.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, councilwoman.
I really just wanted to, you know, we keep saying that it was Amory's idea, and I appreciate that Amory kind of brought this back forward, but I do think it's important that this was brought forward before. And I too think that it's the right thing to do. We want to make sure that the, the will of the people is considered at the earliest possible election. And it, you know, that's not how the charter currently reads. So I too think that it's a great idea. But I, I appreciate that the previous Charter Review Committee actually brought this forward.
It's actually a Mr. Amory Hanson, a historic choice. Yeah, I, I concur. And then I would also like to thank Amory Hanson for bringing this suggestion to this council. So I give him credit for doing that. So with that, clerk, call the roll.
Okay, and just to be clear, we're the former language that we already have in place, correct? Okay, Kelmick?
Aye.
Mosher?
Thank you, Amory, aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Strickland?
Aye.
McKean?
Yes.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Item passed seven-zero.
Okay, so members, we went through those items. Now going to the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to clarify something, I think councilmember McKean asked me about the personnel rules. They actually, it's a meet and confer item, and then it ultimately comes to council for approval.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, members, we're going to item number three. It's been presented by councilmembers Kelmick, Mosher. Would you like to introduce your item?
Yeah, give me one second to bring that up. All right, so this item arose from, I think, the earlier conversation that we had this evening with regard to kind of the murky, I think, legislative record. And then again, with talking, as, as I dug more and more into this and found video clips and newspaper articles and things of that nature, it became, it was unclear. and things of that nature, it became, it was unclear. And the nice thing is that I think some of this has been mooted, in the fact that we've pulled, I think, the three examples that I brought, but I think that the, the item with regard to voter ID, I think affects the city clerk's office substantially, and changes the duties of that, would change the duties of that office substantially, and therefore should not be placed on a primary ballot. And so this item asks the Attorney General to release an opinion on, with being able to go to the archives and talk to the staffers that are there, to produce a legal opinion on the interpretation of Election Code Section 1415, that we're calling into question here that was amended by SB 311 in 2011. So that's a simple action, is to direct the city manager and the city attorney to seek an opinion from the California Attorney General. Councilmember Mosher?
Really, nothing really to add, but I think that it's always best to get the highest level information that we can prior to making a decision, because ultimately, it will cost us more money to place us on the ballot if we should not be doing so. And I think it'd be best just to be able to preempt that by asking the Attorney General to come forward with an opinion, and I, that's it.
And if I, if I might, if I might, and then I'll go to you. I respect the proposal, however, the Attorney General represents the state of California, and we already have an attorney here in Huntington Beach that represents the city of Huntington Beach. It's already been pointed out by case law, where the Attorney General actually lost in court in terms of where they thought the law was, to Redondo Beach, and I believe there was case law that was brought forward by the city attorney's office that also talked about a San Francisco case. So I'm not comfortable to seeking out the Attorney General, because quite frankly, he represents the state and he doesn't represent Huntington Beach, we have a city attorney that represents Huntington Beach, and he's been proven to be wrong in some of those case laws, and so with that, I'm opposed to this measure.
Mayor, may I offer just a commentary? I know councils are very, very sensitive about conflicts of interest, and just for the record, Attorney General Bonta is presently suing the city of Huntington Beach, so he's adverse to the city of Huntington Beach in a housing case, has, and has taken to the podium a number of times, casting aspersions and targeting essentially Huntington Beach with his rhetoric. So I think for a whole host of reasons, if we're going to be concerned about conflicts of interest, it seems exceedingly unwise to pursue an opinion from our adversary.
Who should we seek an opinion from besides you, then, that's above your?
So I know the H item mentioned that things are ambiguous, but actually, from the city attorney's office, it's been incredibly clear, it's just that you don't like the answer. But it's, these things could have been placed on the primary ballot had they moved forward, and they're not moving forward, but they could have been placed on the primary ballot, and it's been consistent, three attorneys in our office, you just don't like the answer, but you can't shop around, you can't forum shop for different attorney opinions that you might like, and Abonta is already on the record as being our adversary. So if you would like to seek an opinion from an adversary, I don't think that's advisable for the city to do it.
That's why I don't seek opinions from you.
Okay, that's really, very least.
So I think that maybe part of the, part of the concern-
But by the way, that's why I don't seek opinion from the Attorney General either.
I think maybe part of the concern is because when we had the charter amendment process in 2022, we were told that we couldn't put anything on the primary ballot that had to do with employment-related matters, and so now, we're being told that we can put employment-related matters on the primary ballot. So I can see why, you know, there would be some confusion.
That process, that process was shepherded by an outside consultant, and not shepherded by my office. So if there was different guidance given to that charter review committee or whatever, I don't know anything about it, I stayed away from it, but that opinion didn't come from me or any of my attorney's research in the office.
I mean, I think that goes to the issue, is that we haven't received a written legal opinion, all we've had is discussions here, and so I haven't, you know, have not been able, and I've requested it, and it's like, no, we're not going to, we don't, it's the policy of the city attorney's office.
But you have, you have received case law.
I've received verbally, I have not been able to review or analyze or understand, I've been, I've had conversations back and forth from the dais, but not to the point where I can sit and review and go over all the cases and really understand how you came to that conclusion. It's a lot of tell, not show, and I brought this up when you weren't here last week, but, or, yeah, last week, but that was the point, is that there was just, there's been a lot of tell, and I understand that that is your legal opinion, but normally, I would assume that there would be a written, there would be a written legal opinion that has all the research and the, and subnoted and footed, and says like, hey, this is how we got to this conclusion.
Not for the public forum, we've never done that, I've been here for nine years, and we do not sit here and issue written legal analysis publicly.
Right.
For the reasons, for obvious reasons, Bonta is watching, clearly, and-
But even, I mean, but even to the city council, like, there's no closed session memo saying like, here, here's how we got to this consideration.
Yeah, you don't, you can't go into closed session to talk about upcoming legislation that's going to be done in public.
But you couldn't present us with a, with a secure document that would, that would present that into our Capstone software that would be attorney-client privileged communication?
We could, but you have the answers on the law, and you got it from Paul De La Sondra last week, and you got it from-
Right, but I just got an answer, I got, this is what we think, but like, again, it's tell, not show, like, I'd like to show the work.
It's not what they think, they gave you case law, it's not what they think, it's the case, it's case law.
It's the conclusion, it's the opinion and conclusion that they reached, right? But I don't, but I would like to be able to review-
It's not what they think, it's not that they made it up, they gave you case law.
They, they did not show their work, that's the issue that I run into. So normally, normally, when people present things to me, they, like, if I have a question, there's a show your work component.
But isn't that like a, like a-
It's called California versus Redondo Beach.
Or, but can't you just come to the, come to, request that through us, we vote on it, and ask him to provide you with information you're asking for, but we do it as a body.
Why would I have to ask the city council to receive a legal opinion from the city attorney?
Because we're one body, we, we can't direct him individually.
But what if you say, but what if you say no?
Yeah.
If you say no to that, then I have not access to the legal opinion of the city attorney.
Then the body has spoken.
So, so, so we can, that's a longer debate, let's-
I understand that, but so that's, again, so that's how we got to this point, is that like-
But I guess, but he did read the Redondo Beach case.
I haven't, I just found that's-
Not only, not only the Redondo Beach case, last week, Paul-
A murky San Francisco case without a citation or presentation.
So I like how you use words murky when you don't agree, and it's funny how it's always what-ifs, and this, and that, and we're going to get to, but when you get case law, you're like, oh, it's not enough, but that-
What case is it specifically, year, site, this, this is the first I've heard of it.
Redondo versus California, correct?
2020, and that's, we heard about it tonight.
You want to read that back?
And in addition, in addition, I'm happy to repeat myself, but in addition to that, the statutes 1450 were specifically cited and read in, I think it was two meetings ago. So if the council wants to vote to direct me to prepare a written opinion and submit it to you confidentially, I will. What I won't be doing is now do something brand new that we've never done in nine years, and no other city attorney does, which is to issue legal essays publicly.
No one asked for that.
Well, that's-
No, I asked, I asked specifically to be presented to understand what's going on, and I was told, man, I don't do that, I don't need it publicly.
No, that's not, that's not, that's not the whole answer, the whole answer is, when the council votes for a legal opinion, we, we prepare and submit a legal opinion.
Wait, but you presented, you asked for-
Look, this whole concept of it not being qualifiable, or that it doesn't qualify for the primary ballot under 1450 is just a concoction, the law is clear that it is eligible. So if the council wants me to go and research something that, to most legal experts, is an obvious answer, and, and those in the minority on the council don't want to accept what is an obvious legal answer, if you want to vote to have me do this work, then fine, direct me to do the work.
Well, I, I think case law is said.
I just want to make one factual, so Mr. Gates, I have seen published opinions from city attorney offices, it's, I mean, they do it, they post them on their website, so I didn't know if you were aware of that or not, but there are localities where they do post.
It depends on, it depends on the city attorney's office, it depends on the structure of government, you're absolutely right, district attorneys do it as well, there are oftentimes where there's a public release, Attorney General does it as well. We don't do that in this office, we never really have, and all of our communications are directly with, when it comes to legal advice, directly with the council, so that's just the way we've always done it.
So I'd like to call the question, it's been moved and it's been seconded, clerk call the roll.
Can you just clarify real quick?
I don't, did we actually move and seconded?
Well, I thought you opened it.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear anybody make a motion.
We just finished the conversation, no, no, I don't, I presented it, so I'll move the recommended item.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
There we go, all right. Councilmember Kelmick?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Vandermark?
No.
Strickland?
No.
McKeon?
No.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
No.
Item fails four, three.
Three, four.
I apologize for that, the record will be right.
It's late, okay. So next members, public comments, city clerk, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
Well, you know, since we do have this new system, I'm just going to invite the people down, because some people mark it, some people don't, and, and then they show up, and we have everybody's names recorded in here, so if you just come down and approach the podiums, we'll go ahead and get your name on the record.
Great.
That way we'll move faster, I think.
Thank you.
A couple did email me that they went home, which I thought was nice.
So David Reinherson again, I was pleased to see that there was at least some amicable discussion and some movement of positions, which shows that at least some of you were listening to the comments you solicited, so, Kasele McKeon, I'm singling you out in particular for that, as a positive thing. I would also say that it appears that the whole election amendment is a solution bulldogged, bulldoggedly in search of a problem, that you've made your decision, and you're just doing this for show, but you have no intention of listening to the input that you've gotten, so you're going to invite incredible expense, you're going to invite lawsuits, and you're going to, in very, all likelihood, increase the concern about the elections, all because some people, some anecdotal people, don't trust the existing elections. I'm going to call on staff, if I, I don't have the right to do this, but I'm going to call on staff, to take all the communications you've gotten about the elections, pro and con, and tally them, because we keep hearing that you, Mayor Strickland, get told anecdotally that people don't trust the elections, we've been told statistically that the elections have no problems. So I'm going to ask you, how much money do you think you could spend on educating the people that are talking to you about not trusting the elections to alleviate their fears, instead of wasting our money on elections run by the city?
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks for being here.
Mayor and city council, Tim Geddis again, I want to congratulate most of the council majorities' MAGA minions for bundling their comments at the beginning to allow the majority of the speakers to speak truth to power almost unabated, by my count, at least three to one in the first round. City Attorney Gates opined about the rights of charter cities to get, to act on their own, but did not opine on the cost issues, or what I call the stupidity issues regarding acting in the best interest of their constituents. It is, you can, you know, you, on the election issue, council majority, your credibility is in tatters, it's time to punt on this until the November election, if at all. I know it, you know it, and the general public knows it, don't rush it.
Next speaker, thank you.
Mary Kyle, I want to comment on some remarks I heard from the dais, from Councilmember Vandermark and Councilmember Burns. You made remarks roughly like the other side, you people, that underscores a complete lack of collegiality up there, it's not a team sport, you're seven people, you're supposed to exercise independent judgment, not vote in blocks, and Mayor Strickland, you talk over people all the time, you don't let people finish their comments, I mean, on the dais. And I notice it mostly happens to the women on the dais, that's a really bad look for you, it's a bad look for anybody. That's pretty much it, do better.
Next speaker, thank you.
Wendy Renklin, first, I want to thank Councilmember McKeon, you have shown some strength tonight, going against the majority, and I appreciate that. In response to Councilmember Burns, we are trying to hold you accountable, you're just not listening to us. I know you weren't here the past two weeks, you missed that the majority of us have all spoken against the measures. Adding Section 106, which is the flag amendment, on top of the newly approved human rights statement, you have made the city a place of hate. You were on the wrong side of history, Councilman Burns, you are the one that's playing identity politics, which actually is homophobic politics. On equating our librarians with rogue people and the Orange County judge that committed murder proves that our point about your nefarious reasons for involving yourselves in the library, it's very odd. Mayor Strickland, are you really debating nepotism? I mean, most corporations have policies against nepotism, and you're up there trying to get around having to deal with nepotism, it's very unethical, which I'm not surprised about. Vandermark, Councilwoman Vandermark, you are gaslighting us, parents are in charge of choosing what books their kids check out of the government, or check out of the library, not the government, not you, but I know that you're just mimicking Moms of Liberty and trying to bring them and their policies here to H.B.
Ten seconds.
I'm in full support of the amendments that Kelmick and Bolton brought up, you guys are not listening to us.
Thank you, next speaker, thank you for being here.
Good afternoon, city council members, mayor, I, I really believe that you guys deserve way higher raise than what you guys get, that's just a joke, I mean, that's ridiculous, especially when you guys are making decisions on giving $100,000 a year for, for a police officer that's coming in as a, as a brand-new recruit. So they're not making, they're not making pittancees, they're making a shitload of money. And also, for the retirement, Mr. Burns, yes, I respectfully disagree with you when you're talking about, about the retirement, I mean, that, you know, everybody should do it on their own, because when you retire, like a lieutenant, you're getting like $300,000 a year still, so, I mean, other people don't do that, so, I mean, you got to be fair, so please, please, please pass that, you guys even deserve it for yourselves, because you guys do work and take a lot of crap. Second thing is, the nepotism rule, please do not vote on it, do not say, don't put it in, in here, because you don't understand, this is one of the most diabolical things to do, because if you say that you guys can't hire anybody and put them in positions, what will happen, if they're, if they're not qualified, people will look super, super close at them anyway, because of their relationship with you. Second thing is that those people, or whatever, are the only ones that, when they get kicked out, they're the only ones that whistleblow.
Ten seconds.
They'll tell everybody else what's going on, so, I mean, if you eliminate that, then the only people that you can hire in nepotism is the staff members, the staff government, and the staff people.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, thanks.
The Free Speech Center defines book banning as, quote, "a form of censorship that occurs when private individuals, government individuals, or organizations remove books from libraries, school reading lists, or bookstore shelves because they object to their content, ideas, or themes," unquote. You support book bans, Gracie, you might as well own it. I'd also like to thank Pat Burns for saying the quiet part out loud in regards to why he supports the ordinance in the city charter, quote, "It makes it better, it makes it more permanent, it makes it harder to be changed by other city councils." Thank you, Pat, for being so honest. I'd also like to comment on the nepotism conversation, while I do support efforts to limit nepotism in general, I do think it's interesting that Tony suggested this was just about Kelly, when he's got a pretty sticky history with nepotism himself. For anyone who's unaware, Kelly, Tony and his ex-wife, Audra Strickland, spent years funneling well over $100,000 in campaign, campaign funds, back and forth to each other during their time in state government. Finally, I'd like to comment on the conversation regarding the salary for the city council, the comments from Casey about, quote, "I don't do this for pay, I do this for my community," struck me. As a board member of an organization that was born out of your voting record, Casey, I know what it feels like to do civic work for no pay, I also knows what it, know what it feels like to struggle to pay rent. Limiting city council members to people who are independently wealthy is just another example of how out of touch this council majority is.
Ten seconds.
Thank you.
Next speaker, thank you.
So Councilman Burns, I've been waiting weeks to have this conversation with you. On the September 5th meeting, you quoted Goebbels, there is no place, and actually, the quote, and I apologize to Councilman Bolton and Mosher and Kelmick, because when I went back and looked at the video again, I realized you weren't even here.
weren't even here. Remember your quote? A lie, when told enough times, becomes the truth. As I said in my email to you, that isn't actually from Goebbels, it's from Hitler, it's from Mayankov. And it was directed towards the Jews, the big lie that the Jews were telling about the concentration camps and the death camps. That's what he was referring to. That's what you use. You talk about hate and how you're opposed to hate? He should be censured. Right now. There is no place in this city for hate and for people who are quoting Hitler. You are hateful and your response about the flag shows that. I was willing to give you the benefit of the doubt that maybe you were not educated, but you are. You understood exactly what you were saying and exactly who you were quoting. There is no place for Nazism in Huntington Beach. There's no place for hate in Huntington Beach.
10 seconds.
You should be ashamed and you should be censoring him for that comment. And that behavior. You are a pawn.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Zachary Stevens. I came here a couple of weeks ago and asked, well, I guess I didn't really ask, but I just kind of gave my opinion about, you know, how the city council meeting went and I'm kind of grateful that there was a discussion. It was a really long discussion, but it was a discussion. So I guess it started off voter IDs. I do think that that should be a common thing. I don't understand why it's not. I mean, if, you know, being a resident in California, if I'm going to own a firearm, I have to have a firearm safety certification. I think that's kind of telling because, you know, that's very, very dangerous to have. If I'm going to drive a boat, I need to have a boating license. If I'm going to leave the country, I need a passport. If I'm going to enter the country, I need a passport, just stuff like that. The flag situation, I do kind of agree with you, Mr. Burns. The only flags that should ever be on city grounds are the four behind you guys. I think if, as a parent, you know, you decide to start picking and choosing which of your kids' artwork you want to put up on the fridge and which of them you just kind of want to have like, oh, you know, that's cool, but, you know, we got the flag up on the fridge. You know, that's kind of a thing. Also, going back to term limits, I do think term limits should be a thing. You know, I don't think any of you are George Washington up here when it comes to being, like wanting to step down because you want to step down. I don't know if anybody besides George Washington in history of the United States has ever done that. So I do think there should be term limits.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Next speaker, thank you.
Thank you for giving us another evening of public comments, which I'm sure you know were primarily by Huntington Beach residents. And I am heartened to know that some members of the council were listening. But I again question, why do we need to change our voting situation to accommodate only 20% of the Huntington Beach voters who chose to vote in person? That is just not good fiscal policy to allow such a small minority to force voting changes to be entried into our charter with no firm idea of the costs in our future. At the last meeting, we were told that a good off-rank language would be to use the word "may" to "shall," and I thank you for taking that step in some cases. And if you are determined to put these charter amendments on the ballot, then let's unbundle them and make each amendment a separate ballot item. Let each proposal, if it's so fantastic, stand on its own merits. We seemingly have plenty of funds for other kinds of things available, so let's just do it.
And next speaker, thank you.
Hello, 35-year resident Huntington Beach. Thank you, Casey, for having, you know, some guts to stand up to what you think is right tonight. I found it a little bit ironic, Mr. Gates, that you said that you don't feel comfortable seeking an opinion from Bonta, who is suing us. But I'm guessing you're going to feel super comfortable in the VIP tent this weekend with someone who sued us. Have you guys asked Redondo Beach about their voting situation and how it's worked out for them? Because if you haven't, why not? And they might be a good place to talk to, to find out how it's been going for them taking over local elections. I did a little bit of research and I believe that Redondo Beach has experienced, when they first launched, $5 million in costs to get that going. In addition to that, they had to pay out another, over $200,000 to get some ballots translated into Spanish and other languages, Braille and other things to accommodate disability voting. And also, they had some recounts that they had to cover. So I really hope you take into consideration all of the costs that this is going to put on the taxpayers if you really go through with this. Thank you.
Next speaker, thank you.
I'm Harry McLaughlin and I still live in Huntington Beach. Mayor Strickland, you said the purpose of the voting proposals in Charter Number One, including voter ID, was to bring back integrity to the voting systems. For who? The loons who still think Donald Trump is president and that the election was stolen? My opinion on Charter Number One has not changed. The voting proposals are a solution looking for a problem that does not exist. Like similar movements nationally, it is quite simply an effort to create doubt on the legitimacy of our election process. Its argument utilizes absurd comparisons like you need ID to fly on an airplane, or you need ID to go to a bank, among many other apples and oranges comparisons absent any valid proof to support the reasoning or conclusions. The sole purpose of these proposals is to keep doubt alive in case the party of your choice loses. Thank you.
Next speaker, thank you.
Hi. This time I would like to address my fellow citizens of Huntington Beach, especially those one who thinks differently and vote differently than I do. I think that is a great thing that we live in democracy and believe me, I know that. I moved here from communist country and I see here that they play by communist playbook. They, I believe that in your, the people who vote differently than I do, that you have well-being of all community in your heart. I don't believe the majority of these people that presents you have well-being of our community. They have on mind well-being on themselves, especially the city attorney Gates and their cronies who are trying to allow nepotism. I don't have anything, and I believe that your wife is qualified, and, but there is so many other people who are qualified. And it's not that they are punished because she's your wife. It's a conflict of interest. And you, we taxpayer pay your salaries. The members of Democratic majority, minority have rights to see, to see every document that they are asking you to provide that. We are paying you for that. That is our money that you are spending. It's, you need to report every penny that you say. Shame on you.
Thank you.
Shame.
Next, next speaker, thanks for being here.
You're communist.
Next speaker, thank you.
My name's Cindy, resident. I wanted to ask a question about the flag amendment. How does it affect a city employee who has an office on city property? Are they allowed to display their personal flags in their office or not because it's a display issue? And then I wanted to ask a procedural question about the election measure. Unless I missed it, I never heard a vote taken on the amendments that were made. You made an amendment to the ADA, you made an amendment to change shalls to mayes. Even if it's a friendly amendment, it has to have first, second, and vote. And I just, I just never heard it. So I think you should go back and review that. I appreciate the change to the shall, but I really don't really understand, or to may, I don't understand what the point is, that if you feel so strongly that this may not be a good thing to do, then we need to just vote it down. I think when you have a measure that uses may terms, it makes it a lot more palatable and then people get, they vote on something or they talk about something in a way that makes it sound more friendly. And if that's the purpose, then it needs to be changed back to shall and be straightforward about what it is. Also, I oppose a six-year term election.
And 10 seconds.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Burns, I'm sorry that you left while other people were speaking.
Thank you.
That concludes public comments.
All right. So members, do I have a motion and second to adjourn? It's been moved, it's been seconded, we're adjourned. The next regular scheduled meeting of the Huntington Beach City Council Public Finance Authority is Tuesday, October 3, 2023.